Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Town Official Planning Board for Thursday, April 14th, 2022. I'm Anthony Berger, Vice Chair of the Town Official Planning Board. Chairman Jonathan Cantor is absent tonight, and I will be serving as Planning Board Chair for this evening. I would like to call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Before we get started with tonight's agenda, I do have a few announcements. First one, I've already mentioned, Mr. Cantor is absent tonight. Number two, Suzanne Ryder has resigned from the Town of Fishkill Planning Board after our March 2022 meeting. On behalf of the Town of Fishkill Planning Board, I'd like to extend our sincerest gratitude and thanks for many years of great service to this planning board. You'll certainly be missed by all of us here at the planning board, and I hope I speak for the rest of the board when I thank you for your service. So, thank you. Next announcement is, we do have two new planning board members joining our board as alternate members. We have Fred Cantor and Vijay Sulpah. At this point, I will turn to our counsel, Dominic Cordisco, and ask about activating our two new alternates in light of Mr. Cantor's absence and the resignation of Ms. Ryder.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Berger. So, the purpose of having alternates is for whenever there's either a vacancy on the board or an absence on the board. And so, the idea is that the alternates attend regular meetings, but then fill in whenever there's, as I said, either a vacancy, an absence, or if there's a conflict where someone has recused themselves from the board. It's appropriate at that point for the alternates to take part and act as voting members in the meeting. The interesting thing is that this is their first meeting, but there also happens to be two absences tonight. So, it is appropriate for the alternates to participate. This is exactly why they were appointed by the town board, and they're getting thrown right into the pool, so to speak.
Is there a need for a motion?
No.
No.
You just go ahead and appoint them to fill in. Just sit on the board. That's the chair's pleasure.
As Chair, I hereby appoint Fred Cantor and Vijay Sulpah as voting members for tonight's meeting. Is that...we're good there?
Yep.
All right, cool. Just a reminder about cell phones. Please silence your cellphone or other electronic devices at this time while in the meeting room as a courtesy to others in attendance. Thank you. And the final is speaking into the microphone. I will try my very, very best to do so tonight. Please speak into the microphone so the audience in the room and at home can hear what we're all saying. With that, our first item is the public hearing for Fishkill Support Center of Jehovah's Witnesses Site Development Plan. And I'll read the description here. At 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as possible, applicant seeks site development plan approval for the construction of a 47,073-square-foot, two-story office building, a 15,187-square-foot, one-story accessory maintenance building, the reconstruction of an existing 14,527-square-foot warehouse for accessory storage and exercise use, and the addition of an accessory park and meditation areas, along with all associated improvements, including 247 parking spaces and four loading spaces. This project proposed is for use by members of the religious order and religious volunteers. The parcels are in the PI Planned Industries zoning district, and I won't read the tax map parcels, but two parcels consisting of 52.2 acres and another consisting of 5.14 acres. At this time, I will ask if someone on the board will make a motion to open the public hearing.
I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, motion carries seven zero. Good evening. Mr. Hare, how are you?
Good, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Berger, members of the board, Mr. Cordisco, Mr. Bodendorf. A pleasure to be before you again tonight.
If you could just put the microphone...
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that better?
Yeah, a little better. If you can just give a brief overview before we go to the public comment, that would be, I think, very helpful.
Absolutely. So, as you mentioned in reading the introduction to the public hearing, our plan is to construct an office building, a two-story office building, a one-story maintenance building, and reconstruct the warehouse that's there. The purpose is to provide some work and accessory space for members of our religious order and religious volunteers supporting our organization. The focus of the project, as we've developed it, was to stay on portions of the property that had already been developed, that were already concrete, asphalt, hardback, rather than do any major clearing or adjustments on the property. The primary users of this facility will be on the...or from the Rivercrest complex, and so, from a traffic standpoint, the ones who are already accessing Rivercrest are the ones who will be accessing this project site on industrial way. And in order to help to also make it more pedestrian-friendly, we are adding features that will encourage pedestrian and bicycle access, weather permitting, for the facility. We purposely stayed away from the vegetative buffers, the tree lines on the east side of the property, the north side, and the west side of the property, the focus being to try to maintain that visual separation as a buffer for our neighbors. And the other thing that we have added to it besides the buildings and the sports fields, as we can see on the screen, is we added a proposed easement in agreement with the board for the greenway trail along the western portion of the property.
Excellent. Thank you. Could we see a show of hands for members of the public who wish to speak at tonight's hearing? Okay, we have quite a few. So, I will go ahead and read our rules of conduct for public hearings. Rule one, speakers are asked to come to the podium and identify themselves so that their name may be entered into the record. Speakers are limited to one turn at the microphone. Speakers are limited to no more than four minutes, and I will ask if our counsel or could possibly keep time for us. Is that...sure. Thank you. There will be a warning when there's one minute left. Speakers should provide only new or different information or commentary. Repetitive comments made previously or at prior meetings is prohibited. Speakers are encouraged to submit their comments in writing so that they can summarize their comments during the hearing. Comments are limited to matters involving the business before the board. Verbal interruptions, shouting, or other outbursts, as well as slanderous or obscene language, or making signs with the body or face are prohibited. No speaker shall make any personal attacks on anyone. If a person continues to interrupt the chair, after the chair has asked them to stop, they will be asked to leave and escorted from the meeting room if necessary. I would also like to note that this application will be revisited tonight, later tonight, in the agenda for a project review. So, I would ask those who wish to speak to make their statement now at the public hearing. And later on tonight, during the project review, this board will kindly ask the applicant to speak to the pertinent items brought up at the public hearing. I will also eventually...well, we could talk about that. I'll skip that. My goal is to avoid a question-and-answer session during the public hearing. So, I'd like to have the comments provided, and we will address them later. We did receive three public hearing comments via email, which I will read into the record. This first one is from Patricia Augusta, Holly Ridge Community. "I am unable to attend and wanted to make sure my voice was heard. I've been a resident in this peaceful area of Fishkill for over 20 years. I am totally against this and very disappointed with the town of Fishkill for even considering this expansion of JW. This will cause great hardship. This is not a commercial area and never meant to be one. In addition, this will cause excessive noise, traffic, the removal of trees, and disruption of nature, the animals, and excessive use of water in the area. Fishkill Township should be there to protect paying, hard-working residents." So, that's Patricia Augusta. The second I am reading from, this is from Bob Walker, 11 White Birch Way. "I am not able to attend this evening's planning board meeting. I would like to express my strong objection to the proposed construction project off Brockway Road and ask the planning board not approve their site development plan. Though I have only lived along this stretch of the 9D for 10 years, I have seen a significant rise in traffic, 24-hour-a-day traffic. If a project of this size is allowed to go forward, the huge increase in cars and trucks will make a bad situation worse on our already crowded local roads despite whatever an applicant-sponsored traffic study might cite. I have no problem with a landowner using their land in a manner that follows established zoning, but there comes a time where this kind of massive development significantly diminishes the quality of all those who have to use local roads already suffering from overcapacity." And that's Bob Walker. And the third is from Pam Jones, 4901 Ridge Crest Drive. "I have lived in this area, Beacon, Fishkill, since 1977. I know there was environmental issues in the proposed building area years ago. Unfortunately, I have not researched it yet, but neighbors living here that moved into my development of Holly Ridge when it was first built are also aware of the environmental issues where they are wanting to disturb the ground. But besides that, I cannot believe it would even be considered. There is more building at the end on the left that was already approved, and that will bring much more traffic to Brockway Road. That two-lane road is not made for another 300-plus cars traveling it every day. Also, again, speaking of traffic, it is impossible some days to get in and out of this area already due to the amount of traffic. Many times, the people on 9D are so backed up that they block Brockway Road, and you sit there for a couple of lights. How many more cars and traffic can we allow down the road to access the homes? This is a residential area. And add insult to injury, they do not pay a dime in taxes. Even the proposed apartments on 9D were not approved because 9D could not absorb the extra traffic. So, I'd like to know what the difference is here." So, that's Pam Jones. So, at this point, I will...by a show of hands, who wishes to speak at tonight's public hearing? With the hat over there, sir. Yes, you, sir. Yeah, yes.
How you doing? My name is Brian Smallhorn. I live in Holly Ridge as well. I am against these, the building plans due to disturbance in the wetlands areas, you know, all the nature and animals that will be displaced from this construction. The traffic alone on 9D, as we all know, is bad for anyone who lives in that area. You can't...I mean, the traffic just from getting onto 84 at normal times, even the quiet times, are not quiet. The fields that they plan to build in the back will be not only devaluing all of our properties back there because of the lights that will be glaring onto our properties into our lights, our windows, I'm sorry, at night, as well as the view screaming children, screaming adults. It just doesn't sound like a good idea for people who already live there. That area is already overcrowded, and it was made to be a residential area. For tax-paying people who provide money and services to the community, who give back to the community, for people who live here, it's almost like a slap in the face. So, with that being said, I'm against the building plans, and I just don't think it's a good idea overall for the town, for the people who live here, and for the community.
Thank you. I saw someone right behind with the...yes, with the vest, yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Fishkill Planning Board. My name is Daniel Wilson. I am a resident at Streamside Knowles. I've lived there since 2010. I have a lot of concerns, and I am very opposed to the development, the continued development by the Jehovah Witness Group down at Rivercrest for these...this is not residential. This is a commercial...this is commercial in nature. I was the final police chief for the South Naya Police Department in Rockland County. We closed our doors on December 31st of this year because Naya College was sold to a Hasidic Jewish community that built a yeshiva, and there was a public referendum that was...that occurred because of this, because of concerns and fear. There was...the village residents voted overwhelmingly to dissolve the village. Because of that, myself and 15 of my officers, our law enforcement careers were derailed or terminated on December 31st. This is now in my backyard. It is in my backyard, and I am very opposed to this. There is going to be a significant amount of vehicular traffic. The gentleman before said that it has to do with people already at Rivercrest. I don't see...I have my sincere doubts that they're just driving down the road to this building. There are going to be...there's going to be an influx of people, vehicular traffic. I don't know if there's been any impact or environmental studies that have happened or will happen, but this is going to drastically affect where I live and my neighbors. As I said, with my personal background, I know how concerned citizens and elected officials can be very concerned about when a religious institution and the locomotive power that they have, because there can be fear of our Lupa lawsuits and being called discriminating against a certain group. That is not the issue here. The unchecked expansion that comes at the expense of taxpayers, because make no mistake, there will be an additional burden financially that will come upon the residents of Fishkill due to...and the municipalities involved, the localing municipalities as well, when it comes to the services provided, highway department, sewer, water. All of these things are going to come at taxpayers' expense. I have, again, my sincere concerns. I am very opposed to this. That being said, I just want to wish everybody a very happy and healthy Easter and Passover season. Thank you.
Thank you. In the red right there.
My name's Gary McGraw. I live on Holly Ridge. I've been there since the beginning, since the beginning of the development in Holly Ridge. And I have traffic concerns. That road on 9, it's just simply not made for the traffic it has now. Number one, you have bridge traffic there. Number two, you have a stadium there. And anybody going on that road knows that when you go to that bridge, four, five o'clock, forget it. You can't get out. So, now you're talking about 238-car parking area. In addition, it's a...it looks to me like it's a commercially zoned endeavor. And it's a residence. We live in a residential community. It diminishes the value of my property, and I'm a taxpayer. It increases, as they said before, and as everybody else said, it increases the sewage costs, the other costs that are associated with it, and it also destroys that wetland down there. And that's my concern. Again, that road, if you take a ride there on a four, five o'clock, it's just crazy. And now you also have the stadium over there. Anybody that knows about the stadium that lives in that area knows that that...it's just crazy. It's just mass insanity. And now you want to propose 238 more, a parking garage for 238 more people, or a lot for 238 more people. That's supposedly people that park in Rivercrest? I don't know if I buy that. And that's pretty much what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, you, sir.
Should you get on the stage?
I'll pass it out.
Turn in town engineer.
I'll earn my money tonight. I'll pass this out.
I appreciate it.
Ready when you are, sir.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Donald Strifler, and I live in Holly Ridge. In fact, I am the closest resident to the Jehovah Witness property. The back of my house is industrial way. All right? Now, in full disclosure, I would let you know that I have dealt with the Jehovah Witnesses before. I was the chairman of the Town of Patterson Planning Board when they brought in their Patterson Farm project, and my name sits on 600 of their blueprints. So, I have dealt with these folks before. I do believe that they make a quality project, but they don't make a perfect project. And some of the items that I have here have to do with the proposed lighting, that all of it, every last fixture on the property on the exterior should have a down lens, flat lens, no cars. The drawings that I could see, which is limited because of the way I had to see them on my computer, the first entrance coming in off of industrial way in front of the small building, there is no provision for trees. I can tell you right now, I have dealt with Robert Alexander, who's been the project manager for Jehovah Witness for Rivercrest. And I also spoke with Dr. Eldred at the last proposal, and I know him for years, that downlighting. I asked them the last time that they brought in their last project to put in the downlighting. Within 24 hours, they had the downlighting in. Problem is that when the young kids came along, he wanted to put more light out in the parking lot, and next thing I know, I could read a book in my living room. Now, the problem here is that they're deciduous trees that separate me from their project. So, when you go in and you make the first left-hand turn, that straight road that goes down to a future parking lot, the every car presently that comes out of that parking lot, okay, shines into my window. That's a fact. And Mr. Alexander's been invited over to my home to verify it. But that's the first issue. There's no...the landscaping, a ban on future lighting around the...I guess it would be the soccer field, which is sitting on top of the old Superfund site, and the baseball field that's down from it.
Excuse me, sir. One minute left, and I'll give you your time back.
Okay.
You did give us quite a lengthy letter, which will be entered into the record. And I just want to make sure, you know, with your last minute, that you...
Okay.
Whatever points you'd like to...
So, we've got that...okay. We've got that. Be happy to give them a copy as well. A note should be included on the drawings in the application that no amplified sound of any kind should be used on the property. That means that in the future, no turning on the games using an amplified system of any battery-powered, handheld, solar-powered, et cetera, et cetera. There should be clear hours as to when to park, as I would call it, because it's actually a multi-use facility. It's a hall, it's a park, it's ball fields. It's a whole lot of different...serves a whole lot of different purposes. But there should be hours for the...anything that goes on outside of the buildings, and those hours should reflect the normal...hours of the people that reside in the surrounding community. Say something like, in the morning, 8:00 AM in the morning during the weekdays, 9:00 AM on Sundays. At night, either dusk or 10 o'clock.
Time, but we do have your...we do have your letter.
I asked the member of the board if I could contend for a moment.
I'd like to adhere to our planning board rules, but we do have your letter in writing. So, this will be entered.
You know, the last time I was before this planning board, I had a different chairwoman, and they wouldn't even take my comments. I gave Jehovah Witness, and every one of those comments were addressed in this, except the landscape comment next to my property. Make sure you get everyone writing. Make sure that it's ironclad, and you'll have good neighbors, all right? But be very careful with a fine print.
Thank you.
Some experience.
Any...yes, you, sir.
Good evening. Ed Gutches. I live in Seven Oval, which is Briarwood, just to the north. Few major...the landscape buffer, I think, for this type of thing, talks about 20-foot minimum evergreen. A second that, there's a tremendous amount of trees between me and this facility.
Excuse me?
This time of year, I can see...I can see the buildings down through this area. So, that 20-foot lands...you know, the drawing talks about up there in the top right, talks about a 20-foot landscape buffer. That could be wood chips. That really doesn't do anybody any good. I think your code talks about a 20-foot minimum evergreen buffer. Because we hear it now. We heard great celebrations last year, last summer. That's great, but these hours are going to be longer with lighting and things like that. So, noise, it comes back again, noise comes back to that buffer. And I'd love to see, you know, I'll be at work at 5:30 in the morning, so I would love to see something earlier than 9:00 PM. So, lighting, the lighting plans. All I saw from the drawings were, so, lighting plans for the tennis and volleyball. Don't know if anything else is lit. It should be protocol downlighting. Should be low glare fixtures. Pass is...you know, I get to look out at Newburgh at night. This shouldn't...right to my immediate south. So, it should all definitely be low glare fixtures, and I see no discussion of lighting at, you know, of interest to me in Briarwood would be the meditation area. So, prefer that not to be lit. That's actually very close to residential. That, again, certainly in that area, goes back to that 20-foot evergreen barrier. You know, that's...I mean, you know, a generic request is if there's any way that meditation area could be more further south, that would help the Briarwood residents too. We do, you know, it's woods, but we hear everything through there. So, my only comments are the lighting and the noise. Noise would be helped by the evergreen. So, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kelly Antonucci. I am a 17-year resident of the Holly Ridge Community, and I am here because I greatly oppose this development. The first thing that I would like to ask is I would like to have this meeting held open because I don't think that this was properly noticed. So, I am not sure who made the decision to have one lone sign posted immediately in front of Industrial Drive on a curb, which means that there is zero chance that any resident from Streamside, Holly Ridge, and the majority of Vista Point residents would never see this sign. Okay? There should have been a sign at the entrance exit to Holly Ridge on Holly Loop. There should have been one on Holly Loop coming out of Streamside. There should have been one on Fire Thorne coming out the other side to 9D, and there should have been one at the Vista Point entrance. So, I am definitely concerned because if you think there's a lot of people here now, imagine how many people would be here if people actually were aware that this hearing was taking place. This area may be zoned industrial, but this is a residential neighborhood, right? We all bought in there for a residential neighborhood. That's what we signed up for. That's what the town approved, and that's what we're expecting you to hold through on, that this is a residential area. Now, you're being asked to permit a massive complex in a residential neighborhood. It doesn't belong there. It's not appropriate. This...I don't know if you've been on Brockway. It's a beautiful... This, I don't know if you've been on Brockway, it's a beautiful curving, winding, it goes down. It's a gorgeous road. It was not designed to handle this level of traffic. And frankly, for the representatives to suggest that this place will only be used by residents of Rivercrest is, is just absurd because then why would you build 247 parking spaces if they're going to be the ones who use it? Additionally, Rivercrest was a luxury apartment complex, built with tennis courts, a swimming pool. So why would we need additional tennis courts in this proposed development when they already have tennis courts in Rivercrest? And I would just like to say that it is frightening being on the opposite side of the road when one of their buses are coming through. I can only imagine how much more frightening it's going to be when the levels of traffic increase. There is only one way in and out of that community, and it's just not designed for this level of traffic. And so I would like to know, when was the last traffic study done? And does it include the new homes that Toll Brothers just built back there? And how much more development can we possibly squeeze into this small residential area? I came here to speak out about the Rolling Hills development, and I'm here to speak out about this project for many of the same reasons. I think that this is a safety hazard. As other people have mentioned, we cannot even get out of our own community. More importantly, not only can we not get out,
One minute.
Yes, but ambulance, fire cannot get to us, right, because of this traffic. And I am there with my two young children, and I am very concerned that we will be prevented from receiving emergency services. And I don't know if you're aware, but two weeks ago, there was a bus accident right in that area. And how much more is this development going to contribute to the traffic? It just makes no sense to have this development here. And I will just add additionally, the other people I've brought, I'm concerned with property values, I'm concerned with disturbing the Superfund site, I'm concerned with the noise because we do hear them, and none of us signed up to live next to that. We signed up to live in a residential area, and that's what I would like to keep it as. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this item? Yes, ma'am.
I'm, excuse me, I'm Roberta West. I also live in Holly Ridge, and I agree with everything that's been said so far here. Our property values are just beginning to rebound, and this is definitely going to affect them. We have a very quiet community, Holly Ridge. It's a close-in town home community. A lot of people might think it could be noisy. Our level, our noise levels are really, really low. This type of, I mean, it's a sports complex you're putting in. That's going to generate noise, it's going to generate noise in the evenings, in the mornings, all the time. There's no way to get around it. The buffer of trees is nowhere near sufficient to get that. We can hear the train from where we live. I live at the opposite end of the complex, and I can still hear the train very well. I can sometimes hear the traffic from the Newburgh Beacon Bridge. We're going to hear this stuff all the time. It's just not fair to put this in here. And I just want to say, in general, basically religious groups, like the Jehovah Witnesses, are generally not good neighbors in that they do not contribute to the tax base. They detract from it. We're all getting services, we all should pay for services. That's not what these groups do. I would not go out of my way to help them to build more things. I just wouldn't, and I don't think that you should either. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other who wish to speak? Yes.
Good evening. I'm Mary Ellen Strabler. I live in Holly Ridge. I really don't have anything new to add, but I just want to make my voice heard that I firmly oppose this. I have concerns about them building 250 parking spaces and saying that the people that are going to be using this facility are coming from across the road. Why do you need 250 parking spaces if the people are able to walk there or bike there? So I really think that you need to be very careful looking at the promises that they are making. And also, of course, the traffic, I agree with what everyone else said about the traffic. It is horrendous getting onto 9D, as I'm sure that you are well aware. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Steve Spatafino. I live on High Ridge Court in Holly, in Holly Ridge. And I'm actually right next to Mr. Strifler. We're about like, you know, on, just on the other side of him. And I can tell you, on nights and on weekends, we can hear the cheering and yelling when they're, when they're playing, you know, down in the Jehovah complex. And you can actually hear it, where you, it's louder than Dutchess Stadium. So I could just imagine, if you're putting a ball field and a soccer court, it's going to be amplified five or tenfold. And right now, we can really hear it. At night, weekends, it is, it is loud, and it's going to be much louder. So I just wanted to add that in, so you get an idea of somebody who's actually, like, like Mr. Strifler said, very close to that, and how loud it is already, and this will amplify. All right? I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, I, I see you back there, yes.
Hello, Marissa Bennett. I also live in Holly Ridge on Boulderway. I agree with what everyone is saying. I'm totally against this. The traffic is going to be insane, and we can't handle any more cars. And I also agree with what Kelly said, the fact that there wasn't enough notification to the neighborhoods in the surrounding area, it just seems underhanded. You know, 237 spaces, we can't handle that. I mean, it's, it's, I agree with everyone, with what everyone says. So I just wanted to make my voice heard as well.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak tonight? Okay, so, oh, I'm very sorry.
Hello, I'm Alicia Estes, and I live in Holly Ridge as well, on Ridge Crest. And no one has asked about the warehouse and the loading docks and what that is going to be used for. And so I would like some clarity on what that is for, because when you have a warehouse, you have trucks, delivery. And so it would be very good to know what that's going to be in combination with the sports complex. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? Oh, yes. Oh, was that it? No? Okay. All right. So at this point, I'm going to briefly ask counsel whether there would be reasons. It sounds like there, there's plenty of comment, clearly, of perhaps keeping the planning, or the, sorry, the public hearing open. But there, I don't know if you have any.
Yeah, okay. There was a comment, you know, that was raised by at least two people in connection with the public posting that has to happen on the property. The code itself says that the applicant shall post the property with a notice advising the public of the public hearing. Period. It doesn't really specify anything additional than that. It does go on to say that when a property has more than 200 feet of road frontage, or where there's unique circumstances or configurations of the property warrant, in the judgment of the board calling the public hearing, that more than one sign could be posted and the dimensions of that sign be set. The point of that provision is, is that you would do it before the public hearing if there were circumstances that warranted it in the board's discretion. That did not occur before the public hearing. If you, however, feel that additional notice is required, you could hold the public hearing open, you could have additional notices posted. You know, it's, it's going to be up to the discretion of the board. Another option would be to close the public hearing and allow a time period for additional written comment in any event.
Mr. Chairman, point of order?
We can't, you've already.
I would like to know when the end of the comment period is, or the.
That's, we haven't gotten there yet.
It's still being discussed.
Thank you.
I, I think we're at the point now where I am going to poll the board, and I would like to know the board's thoughts on whether the hearing should be left open or closed with a written comment period. But I would like to know the board's thoughts, so I, I think Vijay is down there at the end.
I am open to keeping it open.
Same with me, yes.
Yeah, I think we should keep it open until next month, yeah.
Felix?
Well, Mr. Chairman, normally we just post on the property. So I understand that, that's why the planning board did it that way. But Dominic brought up a very good point, not something we've ever done before, is posted outside of a piece of property. So that was, just so the public knows, that's why we put it there. We usually post it, it goes on the property, doesn't go outside of the property. But the public made a good point. I am not opposed to keeping the public hearing open. I would also tell the public, write to us, please. You know, because sometimes you get up here, maybe you're a little nervous, you don't get to say everything that you want to say, or maybe time runs out. We read everything you send us, and we rely on you to give us your public comments. So please, if you have any comment, please write it in also if you can't make the meeting. Just, but I would definitely say, you know, I, I don't think it hurts to keep the public hearing open.
Bridgette?
I definitely want to keep the public hearing open, and given the size of this piece, I'm sorry, I said I would like to keep the public hearing open, and given the size of the piece of property and the, the extent that it impacts the, the neighbors around there that may or may not actually drive where that sign is, that additional signage be, be put up so that everyone has their opportunity to weigh in on the project, whether it's for or against. But clearly, the neighbors feel that we didn't do a good job with notification, and, and we have an obligation to do better.
Fred?
I'm going to just say ditto. I agree with that, you know, it's nice and simple.
So I think we've reached a consensus that the public hearing should be left open, and there were a few that suggested additional signage, but I think since we're here tonight talking about it, I guess the question would be, where would we put additional sign? I mean.
Well, there could be several different options. One is that there could be a larger sign that would be put out along the road frontage for this property. There could be a, you know, or there could be more than one sign. You know, this is really up to the discretion of the board. It's saying that, the code is saying that more than one notice sign should be posted. The board calling the hearing should determine the number, size, and placement of the signs to be posted on the property. I think the sign has to go on the property, it can't go on any other property.
I'm inclined, I'm inclined at this point to, let's just keep the public hearing open to the, the next meeting, which would be April, what is the, May 12th meeting? It is April. I'm losing track of time. So that would be my suggestion, and the board is at a consensus for that. So.
Do you think we should add a sign, I mean, extra sign?
That's the question.
If I might add, just add, so that you're aware, Dominic, the board established the size already in separate bylaws for the signs. I'm not sure that you'll get the sign maker that we utilize to make a bigger one, to be quite frank.
So it would be my recommendation that we hold the public hearing open until May 12th meeting. Notice is, the sign is there, we've noticed by having this meeting tonight. And we certainly would accept written comment as well, between now and the next meeting as well. So I think there's no vote that needs to be made to hold the public hearing, but keep it open.
My, my suggestion would be a motion to keep the public hearing open to the May meeting.
Yep.
Okay.
And, and before we get to that, Mr. Chairman, before we get to that, so are you saying, Dominic, that a sign cannot be placed outside of the property? Is that correct?
Well, it can't be placed anywhere where the applicant doesn't have control. So for instance, you know, it couldn't be placed like within the DOT right-of-way, for instance, or on some other property, you know, because the, the point of the sign on the property is to say to the public that there is a proposal in connection with that particular piece of property.
Okay.
And, and thank you, Debbie, for the clarification regarding the, the size and, and placement of the sign.
So at this point, I will entertain a motion from the board to hold the public hearing open until the May 12th meeting for Fishkill Support Center of Jehovah's Witnesses Site Development Plan. Robbie?
Second.
Felix, second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries seven zero to hold the public hearing open until the May 12th meeting. I, I see your hand up, but we're not accepting any other public comment tonight, but we will at the May meeting.
The sign faces their own property, you said?
Understood.
Okay.
I, I'm not going to get into a public Q and A session here. We've made the decision to keep the public hearing open, I'd like to keep the agenda moving. But understood.
Is, is there anywhere, is there anywhere else that we can place another sign?
Yeah, maybe a second, maybe a second sign somewhere.
I'll ask the applicant, is there any other place that we can place a sign that would make some sense here? Because if we can't place it outside the property.
Well, it has to be on property that they control, correct? So do you own other property closer that it's going to have more visibility? It's in your best interest, I think, also, to have, to hear all the comments, just get them all out there.
And we're, we're willing to post signs wherever the board would like us to. The one was posted in that location because that was the direction we were given. It's posted at the corner of Industrial or Brockway, on the corner of our Rivercrest property. So it's, it's on our property, or just probably in the right-of-way because it's just on the other side of the guardrail. But it's right there on our property. We can post on the actual parcel, but nobody drives down there.
Right.
Except for us, that was the reason the board didn't want it posted down there. We'd be happy to post there if there are other locations that we have permission to post. I don't think we would be opposed to posting because it's, it's the process to let the public have their say.
I, I don't have the location, specific location in mind, so I, I, we've made a vote to keep the public hearing open. I, without having a specific location in mind that, that could be agreed to and could be placed, then I'm not. I, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm, this is, the public hearing is, portion is over for this evening. Please.
Yeah.
Dominic.
Yeah, no, I mean.
I need to keep, I want to keep the meeting, I understand, but we've, I don't know of a specific location, and I'm
Yeah.
not taking outbursts.
Correct. So the applicant has offered to place another sign if the direction of the board is to put up another sign. So I think the, really, it's on the board at this point to decide if and what, if you want a second sign on this, on this particular property. I'm sorry, sir, I'm sorry, you're.
Are they extended 30 days beyond the 12?
No, sir.
Okay, that's what appears, thank you.
I, I do not have a specific location in mind. I, I'm going to keep the agenda moving. The, the public hearing is open, we will accept written comment. I will not accept any further discussion at this point. Dominic, I mean.
Yeah. I mean, in the absence of a motion from the board members, I think the matter is, is resolved. So the public hearing's been held over to the May 12th meeting.
And additional comments may be provided.
Correct. Written comments could be provided any time up until that point, and the board will hear additional comments at the May 12th meeting.
Yes.
Okay. Before we get to tonight's project reviews, we do have two housekeeping items. The approval of minutes, the board to approve and adopt January 13th, 2022, and February 10th, 2022, planning board meeting minutes. Some non-substantive corrections on both of these draft minutes were provided by John Kanter to Debbie Colonna in the planning office. Do you members have any additional comments or corrections on either of the draft minutes?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
No.
I abstain.
Would someone like to make a motion to approve and adopt the minutes of the January 12th, 2022 meeting?
So moved.
Felix?
Second.
And Rob? And Robbie, second, discussion? All those in favor, aye, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
I guess I do because I wasn't part of it.
Yep.
We have one abstention from Fred Cantor. Motion passes six zero. Would someone like to make a motion to approve and adopt the minutes of the February 10th, 2022 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Me.
Me.
We have two abstentions, motion passes five zero. Project reviews, uh, first is LMD Homes subdivision, board to review submission made by the applicant's representative on March 30th, 2022.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, as you mentioned, we're here tonight, uh, to represent LMD Homes. It's a six-odd subdivision on Baxter Town Road. Oh, you're driving?
I'm glad you're here.
You can drive. I don't wanna drive. I don't know how to drive a Doby, sorry. At this point, uh, we've got a conceptual approval from, uh, the Board of Health. Obviously, it's not an approval until the mylar is made and signed. Um, we have, uh, conceptual approval from the Dutchess County Department of Public Works. Um, as the board members, we do have a wetland, uh, across the street, which, uh, that's one of the reasons why we're here tonight is we would need to schedule a public hearing to, uh, open, to discuss that wetland. Um, and other than that, uh, we did receive comments and, uh, are happy to talk about them if you so choose.
Before we do that, it has been a while since this has been on the agenda. Uh, the last project review, as far as I have, is October 2021 and, uh, last appearance was the public hearing back in November. So we did open and close the public hearing at that time. Um, at this point, I'll, uh, I'll ask, uh, I'll ask Ms. Barber to, uh, go through your comment letter.
Sure.
Good evening and welcome back.
Yeah, thanks for having me. I know it's hard to believe, it's, you know, been five months already since November. Um, the applicant's most recent submission, um, has been advanced and a lot of the details that are actually required for, um, final plat approval have been, um, indicated on the current plan set. Uh, they've been before the, or the Dutchess County Department of Health and have, um, received some favorable comments, um, in regards to the application before them. Uh, the applicant previously provided comments from the Orange County DPW, um, and I think that they have, um, you know, conditional approval from that agency. Um, at this point, the applicant is looking for you guys to advance the, um, local wetlands permit. Um, I'll just discuss that a little bit and, um, what that entails. So the applicant is proposing disturbance to the hundred-foot buffer. The disturbance is actually on the opposite side of Baxter Town Road from where the wetland exists. It's in a remote portion of the buffer area. Um, the applicant previously provided a wetlands report, um, indicating that wetlands are not indicative in that area. Um, they've provided some, um, analysis of the excavation required. Um, they also provided a SWIP. We do have comments on the SWIP and would like to see that revised in a future submission. Um, but essentially, they've given you a lot of information, um, associated with what I think you need to sort of evaluate that request. Um, if there's anything that the planning board wishes for the applicant to provide, then, you know, certainly that's within your purview to request. Um, the code gives you guidance on how to make decisions on, uh, wetlands permit, so I'm happy to provide that in our next memo. Um, the applicant is requesting a public hearing for this, which is required. Um, so that's something that the board could consider authorizing this evening if you think it's appropriate. Um, otherwise, I don't wanna go into too many of the details, um, regarding the technical comments, but there are some outstanding issues from even our prior memo that we gave to you. Um, that's including the, uh, with requirements for the pull-off on Lot Six. Um, that could impact the coverage calculations for the applicant, so we've asked them to correct that on their plan. Um, the SWIP revisions I already mentioned. Um, we've asked for confirmation that the detention basin, the grading, is suitable for mowing, which is what they're proposing for maintenance. Um, and that'll be the responsibility of, to the two lot owners per, per their declarations that were provided. Um, we've asked for revisions to the erosion and sediment control plan and I think at the last meeting, the planning board discussed supplemental landscaping in lieu of street trees. Um, so that's something I think that the applicant needs to either show on the plan or if the planning board doesn't think that that's appropriate anymore, they need some direction on that. Like I said, I think that they've given a lot of details for final plat approval already. We've listed some additional, um, details that they should include on their plan. Um, what else did I have here? Oh, as far as, um, the declarations and easement descriptions that were provided, uh, we did include some language in our memo and will defer to Dominic's, um, advice as far as whether or not that should be included in the declarations. Uh, we received correspondence from the applicant's attorney tonight, providing the one description that we did not have. Um, so we'll review that for closure at a later date and provide any comments if there are any. Um, Clerk Colonna, um, corrected, correctly notified me that, um, parkland fees, um, in lieu are calculated by her department and that does not require a referral to the town board. So that'll be something that you include in your resolution if you move to approval. Um, and the last thing I just wanted to mention is that seeker has not been concluded. So if the board wishes for us to prepare a Part Two EAF, um, we're happy to do that for consideration at your next meeting. And I think that's all I have unless anybody has any questions.
Uh, regarding the wetlands, was that something that had previously been shown on the plans or is that something that has just been?
I think we, we've actually shown it, it was on the plan. Um, and I think, uh, being that it was across the street, uh, that's when we identified that the work that would be done, there's a, we're gonna do a shared driveway there, um, and one driveway exists there. So, uh, that's where the disturbance would come into play. Also the drainage work, because that would be in the buffer as well.
Right, I think there's the construction of one driveway, the utility connections, and then an expansion of the detention basin that's proposed. That'll be, that'll constitute the disturbance in that area. Um, and I also forgot to mention that the applicant is required to get a permit from the DEC prior to final plat approval and I understand that they're engaging with that agency currently.
Correct, that has been submitted, um, and it's under review at this point.
Okay. Uh, Dominic, do you have any, uh, additional items? I know Natalie touched on some of the easement items.
No, she did.
I suspect you wanna talk about that.
And, and those were very helpful comments from Natalie as well and, uh, I will be sure to forward on to her suggestions as far as, uh, amendments to the declarations to Richard Cantor, who's the attorney for the applicant. I'd already provided some comments to him as well and, uh, as Natalie mentioned, he had forwarded, uh, the missing meets and bounds descriptions, uh, for the one waterline easement, uh, that was missing. And so that's been provided and is now under review. Uh, as Natalie pointed out, uh, the, the real issue for the board to decide tonight is whether or not, uh, they're ready for a public hearing on the wetlands permit. You know, it is a mandatory public hearing.
Yes.
And so it could be scheduled if the board is satisfied. Um, I was wondering as to whether or not the board also wanted to consider whether to hold a public hearing on the proposed final plat. Um, you haven't, although, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong and I, I know that's the application predates me, but you had a preliminary public hearing, but you haven't had preliminary approval at this time?
Correct.
Correct, so, okay, so it would be premature to have a hearing on a proposed final plat when we haven't had pre, preliminary approval. But that's something that the board can decide at a later time because that, that public hearing is, is wavable uh, if the board decides to do so at that time.
So that wouldn't be something we would, we would...
You don't need to decide, I mean, I was gonna suggest for efficiency purposes of holding a combined public hearing on wetlands and the final plat, but they haven't gotten preliminary approval yet, so they can't have a public hearing technically on a final plat because they're just not procedurally at that standpoint yet.
Understood. Thank you. Um, I did have some observations as well. Um, first was the board received a memo from Joel Petrus dated April 11th, 2022. He indicated he had no comments on the application at this time. Um, I did read through your memo, Ms. Barber. I did see you had ten recommended conditions scattered throughout that letter and, uh, quite honestly, I, I thought they're all very much appropriate. So I did wanna point that out. I don't know that I'll go through all of those at this point, but I did notice that, um, they would be, you know, seemed to be very appropriate toward, uh, final conditions. Um, I did have a question about the, uh, easement for the detention basin on lots one and two. Uh, the easement said that it would be for the benefit of the town of Fishkill, but on page three, it says the maintenance is the obligation of owners of lots one and two. And that was a bit of a concern to me, um, that two property owners would know how to properly maintain a detention basin. Um, or if they would maintain it at all. And I, I believe this may have been discussed at a previous meeting, but I was, uh, gonna ask Dominic if there's a different way that we would potentially approach that.
But, I mean, I'm not familiar with how the town has dealt with that in the past, but I would assume that the town would be reticent to take over 100% responsibility for that. And typically, the mechanism to do so would be to create a drainage district, but I don't think that that's what's being proposed here. You know, the easement, as, as it's written now, puts the burden on the homeowners to maintain that, uh, that detention basin and if they fail to do so, it gives the town the ability to go in, but not the obligation to go in and, uh, and make any corrections that are, that are needed out there. And that's only if it's failing at that point. That's my basic understanding of it.
I would assume the maintenance would be mowing or, you know, uh, cleaning it, but I don't think it stops the town from going in if there's an issue. Let's say, I don't know, for whatever reason, the person on one of the lots can't maintain it, then it would, it would give the right to the town to go in and clean it or maintain it.
That, that, that's correct.
Okay.
You know, and that's a fairly common practice. I have to say, you know, that in twenty-some years of practicing in this area, I'm not familiar with any municipality that has actually gone in and, and, and maintained a, a private detention basin. I mean, I, I, you know, I mean, it's only my experience, but I, but it, it's not something that, that happens on, you know, unless, unless you have a town that takes the approach of, of creating multiple, uh, drainage districts, in which case, you know, there is, uh, you know, a taxable line item that gets taxed to those particular homeowners that are benefited by the drainage district. And then the town essentially has the obligation, uh, to maintain those, those basins as well. But that's not what's being proposed here.
Okay. At this point, I'll go down the line and ask the planning board members if they have any, uh, comments that they'd like to bring up at this time. BJ?
No comments.
Bob?
No, I don't think so.
Robin?
I don't have any, anything.
Felix?
I think Natalie covered a lot and, um, that was a good question about the detention basin, but I don't have anything further to add.
Bridgette?
Um, no, I really don't have anything to add. I'm not a fan of shared driveways or shared detention basins because that's just asking for trouble, in my opinion, but I don't know how you get around it at this point.
Fred?
Yeah, I, I'm just concerned if it logs up, what the backup is going to be.
It would be the town coming in.
Well, yeah. And did the highway departments make any comment on that?
It's actually a county road, um, and the county DPW did weigh in on it and, um, I think to the maximum extent that the applicant could, they, and tried to put the basin outside of the county right-of-way. Um, and the county has opined that they do not want responsibility for maintenance of the basin, um, which is why that default goes to the town, essentially. And again, um, the way the declaration is written, uh, it's the right to assist with the maintenance of that basin, not the obligation. So in a way, is the town, if, you know, there was an issue to occur, responsible. And also, um, I think there's, uh, stipulation in the declaration that would essentially charge a lien against the homeowners, um, that they would be responsible for the financial burden if the town was to incur any.
That's correct.
I appreciate the explanation, thank you. So by my understanding, there would be two actions that this board would consider tonight. The first being, uh, whether to schedule the wetland water course and water body permit public hearing. And the other would be authorizing our consultants to prepare, uh, draft EAF Parts Two and Three and a draft determination of environmental significance. Um, my personal opinion would be, I think we're ready for the public hearing. I would, my opinion would be to hold on the EAF Parts Two and Three in light of the fact that we do need to have the public hearing. So that would be my recommendation and I'd like to get the board's thoughts.
I agree on that.
I think that was for me. Um, so, um, I was gonna ask our consultant what he thought about that. Uh, I, I, my feeling is we could hold off on the EAF also, but we should definitely do the public hearing. But did you have anything you wanted to say about that?
That is an appropriate course of action at this point.
Okay, alright, great, thank you.
Bridgette?
I'm good.
And Fred?
Yep.
So I think I will, uh, ask for one motion. I'll ask if someone, please make a motion to schedule the public hearing on the proposed wetland water course and water body permit for the LMD Homes subdivision for the May 12th, 2022 meeting at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as possible.
So moved.
Felix, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries seven zero. I believe that's everything for this agenda item tonight, unless there's anything...
I got just one question. As far as the trees, um, the street trees, I think when we were here last time, we talked about it and how it's going to limit site distance. And I understand that, um, the board would like to, um, show trees. We just, we need a little clarification on where you want these. You know, I think if you're visiting the site, I'm certain you have. Um, I, I really don't know where you wanna put the trees. The vegetation on a lot is really gonna be dictated by, you know, whomever buys these lots. So I think we talked about, we were gonna keep as many trees as possible, which, you know, is certainly, um, the intent of, uh, the builder because obviously taking trees down, it's, it's a costly, it's a costly effort. We'd rather not do. Um, I just wanna be clear on what the board wants so that we can address this issue.
I, I think the person who would wanna opine on this most is not here tonight. So, um, I don't know if the planning board has any recommendations or suggestions, but I guess my suggestion would be, um, the applicant could certainly propose what they think would be appropriate and we can review it at the next meeting.
If, if, if it's on private property, we would have no control over it. And, you know what I'm saying? Let's say you buy the lot and a tree dies. You know, what's the obligation to remain? And we're, we, we just don't know that, as you know, this site distance on this is very limited. So anything that we would do, uh, would certainly become an issue with site distance. And I believe the county back in October had mentioned the same thing, as far as where the driveways are. Uh, looking down there, you would lose, you know, a little bit of site distance depending on the growth.
I mean, my personal opinion would be Baxter Town Road would not be the place to do that.
Right.
Um, I don't know if our consultant has any thoughts on that?
Sure, um, I think at the last meeting when you guys discussed, uh, street trees, you said, yes, that's not appropriate, um, due to site distances and where the driveways were going to be located. And I think the suggestion at the time was to locate them outside of the right-of-way and, um, as the applicant's engineer has indicated, um, the issue that you run into with requiring trees to be planted is, you know, how do you preserve them in perpetuity? Um, I think there are legal mechanisms of doing that, um, you know, similar to the declarations that are being proposed for your shared driveways and, um, you know, uh, the detention basins, but in general, um, it's something that then carries with the land. Is it something that's a nuisance to the property owner? Or is it something that you think is a benefit, an overall benefit? So I think that's really the, um, struggle that the planning board should consider now is, you know, is, you know, the... Is that something that you think is, is, is a real benefit to the development here?
I think it's difficult to do that because now you're encumbering a lot with something that protects a, a plant. Let's say it's a tree and the tree dies, now what?
Again, there's those mechanisms for, you know, having them replanted or, um, you know, if it becomes diseased or dies, that, you know... if it becomes diseased or dies, that, you know, but it becomes a burden on the property owner eventually.
We've worked in this town for a number of years, and I don't remember ever being asked to put that on a project this small.
I don't think that that was the suggestion, if I may.
I don't think I would be prepared to say that.
We were talking about what options there would be, you know, I think in general, the point is well-made, and in addition to that, like, if it was a larger project, and there was perhaps, for instance, a homeowners' association.
Right.
You could put a burden on homeowners' association to make sure that certain trees, street trees, for instance, were maintained, but this is a six-lot subdivision.
Yeah, I don't think I would be prepared to, me personally, I don't think I would be prepared to do that.
Just Mr. Day, we didn't suggest that. We just...
No, I understand.
Yes, oh, yeah.
All right, I totally take it.
We didn't say that. I mean, she's giving us guidance.
And I think the answer to street trees would be along Baxter Town Road, no.
Yeah.
Unless there's any other thoughts from the planning board. And I'm not hearing any, so.
Okay.
I think that's your answer.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, you do need to decide where to put the sign for the wetland water account?
Yes. So, I will, I'll ask the board, two signs I think would be most appropriate, one on Orchard Place and one on Baxter Town Road.
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
On Orchard Place, I believe was at lot five, at the top of the screen there, five, so right around where lot five is and along Baxter Town Road.
So, one on each road?
One on each road, yeah, that should be good.
Yes.
I'll get that to you, Mark.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion for that?
No.
Two on the road, two down the road?
Okay, then we've made the motion for the public hearing.
Depends upon how it's faced. You have the bend there.
Yes.
So if you put only one in, people are only going to see it from one side.
Well, if you put it in perpendicular to the road, you should see it coming from both directions.
Yeah.
Up, okay.
All right.
Once it can be seen from both directions.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very good. Next item on the agenda is lands of Charles and Kathleen Brownell subdivision. Board to review draft EAF part two, draft EAF part three, and, where is it, draft environmental assessment, I guess would be the, I don't want to be presumptuous about what the declaration would be, so. Good evening.
Good evening.
It would be shocking, I think, if it went one way rather than the other.
Fair enough. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Bean Alons. I'm the architect for the Brownells from the Vitale Alons Architectural Group, and quite frankly, I'm here to, more to listen than to say anything. It's our expectation that the board would try to wrap up seeker this evening and consider passing the resolution for both preliminary and final subdivision approval.
So I think at this point, it would be appropriate to turn it over to Mr. Bodendorf. I believe first, we would need to review the draft EAF parts two and three.
Yeah, you should have all received. It's titled Draft Number Two, April 8th of '22. The short EAF part two, as you can see, we only identified one of the 11 items as a potential small impact, and that's, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land, and obviously, because they're adding a house that has to be checked, but very minimal impact, so if you agree with that, we can move on to the EAF, or the neg deck, I'm sorry.
Dominic, would it be appropriate at this point to vote on the draft EAF part two and part three before we go ahead? Sure. Before I do that, I will ask the board if they have any comments on the draft EAF part two and part three.
No, I do not, Mr. Chairman.
No.
Okay, I'm hearing none, so at this point, I will ask the board for a motion to approve the draft EAFs, draft EAF parts two and three for the lands of Charles and Kathleen Brownell, two-lot subdivision, as reviewed tonight, and to authorize the chair to sign.
So moved.
Felix and Bridgette, any discussion?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
We have one abstention. Motion passes six zero. John, we're ready to go through the negative deck.
So again, you should have received this, titled Draft Number Three, April 8th, 2022. Seeker status for the lands of Charles and Kathleen Parnell, two-lot subdivision, unlisted action, condition neg deck, no description of action. The applicant is seeking subdivision approval of a single-family lot with an existing dwelling into two single-family lots. Existing lot would be 7.6 acres, and it's proposed to be split into a 6.3 and a 1.3-acre lot, approximately. The 6.3-acre lot would contain the existing dwelling and improvements, and the 1.3-acre lot would contain the proposed two-story dwelling. Skip it now, reasons for supporting this determination. The board of the town of Fishkill, as lead agency has reviewed, the action identified all relevant areas of environmental concern and has considered the project plans and the completed EAF parts one and two, and all relevant supporting documentation. As compared the impacts, that can be reasonably expected to result from the proposed action with the criteria set forth in six NYCRR 617.7C, and hereby determines that no significant adverse impact associated with the proposed action have been identified, and therefore, preparation of an environmental impact statement is not required.
Okay, any comments?
And the, I'll just, yeah, real quickly, the reasons for supporting the determination. One, erosion and sediment control measures, including silt fencing, will be implemented to contain any siltation on-site. Two, the proposed action will result in an increase in noise pollution during the construction phase. However, this will be mitigated by the fact that construction is temporary, and hours of construction will be in accordance with town zoning requirements. And three, the proposed action will not result in any impacts on geological features, flooding, or groundwater, air, agricultural, aesthetic, open spaces, and recreation, and energy sources, or transportation systems, human health, community plans, or community character.
Excellent. Thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
No comment at this point.
No.
No.
I'm hearing no comments, so I will ask the board for a motion to adopt the negative declaration for the lands of Charles and Kathleen Brownell, two-lot subdivision, as discussed tonight, and to authorize the chair to sign.
So moved.
Got Bridgette, a second?
Second.
Felix, a second. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained?
Abstained.
We have one abstention. Motion carries six zero.
Mr. Chairman, in connection with the approval resolution that was authorized at the last month's meeting, I have to, you know, advise the board that, without getting into too many details, there's been a number of health challenges with my family, and so as a result, I'm a little bit behind, and I did not have ready for the board's consideration tonight, a final version of the approval resolution for this two-lot subdivision. This particular, you know, project is fairly straightforward, and I do have a draft prepared, but my normal process would have been to provide it to John and as well, you know, to Debbie and to the chair, to review beforehand and make sure that it was comprehensive, but that did not occur. So as a result, like, you don't actually have a draft in front of you tonight. That said, I do have a draft that's prepared, it's just not ready for final review. But what I would suggest to the board is, there's a couple of different things that could occur. I mean, one option would be for to hold this matter over to next month, where that resolution could then be presented at that time. It would be a delay, unfortunately, and this, of course, is solely attributable to me. The other option that the board could consider would be to authorize the chair to review and then sign the resolution of approval for this particular project. This is a two-lot subdivision. The only conditions of the approval is that the plans have to be presented for signature, and the fees have to be paid. I'm not aware of any other special conditions associated with this particular project, so it's actually a fairly straightforward resolution, and as I said, one option would be for the board to make a motion to authorize the chair to sign the final version of the resolution when it's presented.
So, at this point, I'm going to ask the board what their thoughts are.
So you'll be presenting it to the chair in a week, or within a few days?
Tomorrow, tomorrow. So, you know, my son broke his arm, he got the flu, my wife has had some, I'd rather not say and get into too many details, but we've been, we've had a number, over the last several weeks, a number of challenges in our family, so I apologize for that.
So would the board be comfortable with the approach outlined by Mr. Cordisco of having the chair sign the resolution when it is final?
I have no issue with that. I think it's pretty cut and dry.
I don't think, yeah, no issues.
I agree. You know, this is straightforward. I don't think we need to delay this any longer.
I'm hearing no objections to that approach, so with that, I will ask for a motion. I guess we'll have to, I'll have to word this a little differently.
This would be a motion to grant both preliminary and final approval for the subdivision for the Brownell two-lot subdivision, and to authorize the chairman to sign the resolution.
I can move that.
We have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
We've got a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes seven zero.
I want to thank you all for your consideration and understanding, in connection with this. This is not something that I would normally find myself in, or, you know, and certainly don't want to result in any delay to the applicant as a result of my shortcomings.
So you're not taking an Easter break?
No, no, Easter, we're ordering out for Easter.
Always a good decision.
So I would, under the circumstances, ask the board to provide us with a copy of that draft resolution, so that we, one of the conditions of that resolution would be to present approval from the county health department, and with the county health department, we were actually in a catch-22 situation with the health department, because the planning board wanted a final approval from the health department as a condition of final approval, and the health department wanted preliminary approval from the planning board before it granted approval, so that was a little bit of an issue for us, but the health department has agreed to finalize their approval, providing that we gave issue drawings to it that exactly resembled the drawings that we would issue to the planning board for its final signature. So if I can get a copy of that resolution, I can make sure that the drawings that we provide to the health department are in fact the exact same drawing that we provide.
So the draft already has the most recent drawings referenced in it. Unless the board has any objection, I have no objection to providing a draft to the applicant's representative for the review. It is for both, like, the motion that was adopted, it's for both preliminary and final approval. It's conditional.
Right.
You know, you have to get all your outside agency permits, including the health department as part of that process before you would get the plat signed, but this should give you everything that you need in order to go to the health department and say that you're ready for their approval.
Correct. I'd just like a copy of that resolution.
Do we need to make a motion to that point?
No, no, unless the board has any objections, but, you know, I mean, it's the applicant's project. I typically, when a resolution is in final form, have no compunction to not give an applicant a copy of a resolution that affects their project, so.
I have no objection. Does the board, anybody on the board?
No.
No.
There you have it, no.
Okay, great.
No objections to that.
I guess Debbie will send that to me?
Yes.
Okay, super. Thank you.
Thank you.
Enjoy your holiday, everyone.
Thank you. You too.
Thank you again.
Next item on the agenda is Fishkill Support Center of Jehovah's Witnesses Site Development Plan. Board to review submission made by the applicant's representative on March 30th, 2022. Welcome back, Mr. Hire.
Good evening. Hello again. Joe Hire, of course, with Fishkill Support Center of Jehovah's Witnesses. I have with me Matt Ryan from Colliers Engineering. He'll be able to speak to some of the stormwater and comments. The submission that we made on March 30th was to, sorry, I keep forgetting that. With my voice, usually people can always hear me, but I apologize.
As long as you don't mind my...
No, no, I never mind, I don't mind.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah. So with our submission on March 30th, the adjustments we made were, we changed the color of the building, and we have the sample board that's been provided. We forgot to add the white trim piece, so this will be the trim around the windows, some of the other trim on the building, and along with that, we also added the 30-foot easement along the west portion of the property, a draft location that we would like to work with the town in getting finalized and set. And then the other change was, we changed a couple of the trees and shrubs in the landscaping plan to a, to species that our landscaping department would prefer to have there, so we called those out on our submittal letter. And other than that, the plan hasn't changed since the last submission to the board.
Okay, I'm going to go to Mr. Bodendorf to please go through your memo, please.
Sure. You should have all received a copy dated April 11, 2022. With regards to seeker, before the board is in a position to act on seeker, one question remains. We would like some clarification as to where the nearly 7,750 cubic yards of material is going to be placed. It appears from what we've looked at, that it's going to be reused on-site, so just a little bit more clarification as to where that's going and how it's going to be done. Obviously, they still need outside agency approvals, notably the health department. They'll need a highway work permit from the town for the pedestrian trail, pedestrian trail where it extends outside of the property into the right-of-way. Let's see. And then we did have an opportunity to complete our review of the revised stormwater pollution prevention plan, and had a few more comments on that. I won't go through the specifics of that, but they're pretty straightforward comments, but they do need to be addressed. And I, you know, based on the comments we heard from the public tonight, at this point, there hasn't been any formal traffic study submitted, but the board may want to consider that, given all the concerns that were brought up. Another thing that we could do is, we could have our traffic expert weigh in on the project ahead of time, but I think at minimum, you would want a little bit more information on the traffic, just based on the comments that were both received in writing and spoken this evening.
Would there be any other studies that would be appropriate to ask for in light of the public comment that was provided tonight?
I'm not, I don't believe so. I mean, there were some comments about the environmental easements. They've provided information on that, and though they do show athletic fields above those areas, they're not excavating, and that's the only thing that's not allowed in those areas, so I don't know what other environmental studies they would have to do at this point.
Dominic, do you have any comments at this stage?
No, sir. No, sir.
So there were clearly many comments brought up at tonight's meeting, and I think at this point, bring up some of the key ones. Environment was mentioned, the trees, traffic, wetlands, the tree buffer, and the noise being the key ones that I had noted, and that's not all of them, but those are some...
And maybe the lighting also?
Lighting.
Lighting, you know, again, I'm not, not all inclusive. Please do not be mistaken. So my, my first suggestion would be that the applicant be prepared to prepare a written response to the items that were brought up, not only at tonight's hearing, but the written comment we've received to date, and to be prepared to do the same, the comments that would be provided at the next hearing, I think, before this board could consider a EAF Part Two or Three or a draft determination of significance. At a minimum, that would be something we'd like a record of. I don't know what the board's thoughts are on that, but I, I believe a written...
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I agree. I think that in the past, that was the practice we used to have, is that the applicant would provide written responses and go down a log of comments that were made, and you're shaking your head, so I guess you, you're with that, okay? But I think that helps us and helps the public to, to see what the answers are to the comments. I did want to talk about the traffic. I, I do live on that corridor, so the traffic is very difficult there, and I know it's, since I've moved there, it's progressively gotten worse and worse. I really think, I, I don't know when the last traffic study was done in that area, but, um, and maybe something we need to look at, because I, I understand what you're saying, that you say that most of the people going there will be from River Crest, but I don't know if there are going to be people coming from other places or other traffic, and I think it's important that we understand what the traffic impact will be there. Because there are times that I can get in and out pretty easy, and there are times where traffic is backed up into the town of Woffinger and backed up always, you know, somewhere down in Beacon. And it's, it can be really bad. Anything happens on 84, forget it, we're just, we're stuck. We're not moving. So something for us to think about, you know, I don't, I don't know what the board thinks about that, but I think that might be something for us to consider.
I certainly think that this board should authorize a traffic study. Mr. Bodendorf, would we have to, for tonight, to make a motion to authorize a traffic study, would we have to be, address the scope of it? To what points? Because several points of interest were mentioned, obviously 9D, but how far this study would consider?
Well, I, I mean, you've got the, the one main intersection, right? I mean, that would be the focal point of the, the study. I could certainly have our in-house traffic expert weigh in as to what else might or should be looked at.
Because I believe there would be times where there would be an event at the stadium, the bridge. I'd like some input from our consultant as to what would be an appropriate scope before we go ahead and authorize a study, because I think there's plenty of points of interest in the area, and I think this board would benefit from a recommendation of what that traffic study would entail before we went and just blindly authorized a blanket traffic study.
Certainly, and, and we can, we can certainly have that provided either at the next meeting or well in advance, if that would be preferred.
Mr. Chair.
Dominic, that would, I think there has to be a scope. I think there's clearly some points of interest here, and I would like a traffic consultant to, to weigh in on the appro, I think just authorizing a blanket traffic study tonight, we may not get what we're...
No, I, the, the concern's well founded, and certainly, you know, there, there was significant comments from the public regarding the traffic impacts from this proposal. And so the board has an obligation under the State Environmental Quality Review Act to evaluate traffic impacts associated with this. This is a classic area of, of focus. The traffic study itself would have to be undertaken by the applicant, you know, so the fact that you're letting the board, excuse me, letting, the board is letting the applicant know that traffic is a concern that you want to see addressed and potentially mitigated through the seeker process is entirely appropriate at this time. The applicant, I'm sure, will have their own ideas as to what the scope of that study will be, and so there should be a proposal from the applicant regarding the scope of that, and that needs to match up to the board's consultants' suggestions as to what should be studied. But then ultimately, it's going to be this board that makes a determination as to what would be the appropriate scope of that. You'll hear from the applicant, you'll hear from your consultant, but you'll make a determination as to whether or not what's being done is adequate for looking at traffic impacts.
So we wouldn't necessarily need to make a motion tonight, but we would ask the applicant to provide some input at the next meeting for a scope, and I believe we would ask Mr...
That would be my suggestion, you know, I mean, the, you know, the focus of it is, you know, I mean, it's, you, you can only drive the process only so much in the sense that, you know, the, the applicant, if they want to advance the project, will have to address the board's concerns. So I, I think you've already indicated that you want to see traffic impacts evaluated. The applicant will either decide to do that or not do it, and, and if they don't do it, then the board's concerns remain outstanding and the application does in advance. So, you know, I think it would be incumbent upon the applicant to prepare a proposal for what the scope of a traffic study would be, and at the same time, for the board to hear from its own consultant as to what that should be, and hopefully those things will marry up, and, and then the board can get the information it needs to evaluate the concerns regarding traffic, not only that the board has, but the members of the public have.
Mr. Hire, is that...
That's, that's acceptable. I understand we would submit that before the next board meeting, so that that could be decided at that board meeting and we move forward.
That would, that would be our hope, and we would ask Mr. Bodendorf and his team to be prepared for the next meeting, to provide that recommendation as well.
Very good.
Okay. I do have a concern about the trucks that are going to be going in there. You tell, all right, you're doing, you're having a warehouse back there. What size trucks are going in, when are they going to be going in, and will they be able to fit on that road?
So if I, if I may, the, the existing warehouse that's there, just a small portion of it, from the plans that we've submitted to the board, just a small portion of it will be used for storage. Most of it will be for indoor exercise rooms, so it'll be a, a combination storage exercise facility. And if I may, again, it speaks back to the traffic, the, the deliveries that are taking place, same thing that are happening right now, deliveries to the River Crest facility, will just be moved instead of from the River Crest clubhouse area, will be moved to this spot here. So it's not an increase...
It's not large storage. It's not large...
It will not be a large storage facility, no.
So, you know, there were other items brought up tonight, you know, trees, screening, noise, you know, I, I think it would be, certainly as part of your written explanation of the items brought up, but to see some mitigation measures offered in future plans, lighting. So those would be items we would, we would welcome, and obviously we'd like you to address as well.
If I may ask a question?
Yes, please.
One of the concerns, there's a number of the concerns were about the athletic fields, and I'm, you know, trying to turn soccer fields on my iPad here. Yeah, is there any way to look at maybe moving those fields further away from the property line?
We could look at it. I will, I will tell you, the placement there is primarily so, one, we don't push and affect the wetlands. We're, we're working very hard to stay out of the wetlands and the buffers. Right now, we're not encroaching on any of those on the site. Second, that is the brownfield area that was remediated, as has been mentioned, and one of the, one of the goals with the brownfield program in New York State is to remediate to a point that a portion of the property can be used for specific uses. And recreation, excuse me, the breathing here, recreation is one of the approved uses and points that was encouraged from the remediation program. And so what we're trying to do is, again, respect the wetlands. We're trying to not be too invasive on the rest of the property, just areas that have already been developed, concrete, asphalt, et cetera. And to speak to the concerns, as has been mentioned by Mr. Bodendorf, that's why we have no lighting suggested for that area, because we don't want to do any excavation there. This is, this is surface work, maintaining the soil cap that exists to keep the engineering controls, work within the engineering controls for that remediation project, but at the same time, have a beneficial use instead of it just sitting there.
Well, I still think it's worth, worth looking at to see what we can move away from all of those other homeowners. It, it appeared, I'm looking at the grades, I don't, I don't know that it's that big a deal, but that would be that difficult to do, but it certainly deserves to be looked at.
I think it ties to the mitigation measures that we're, we're looking to see, and, you know, part of that being noise, lighting, you know, perhaps a, a condition of when that field could be used would be somewhere that we may ultimately go, but we'd like to see some consideration or suggestion from the applicant that could be presented for our consideration, but...
Yeah, we'd be happy to do that.
That's certainly a major concern that's come up tonight and one that we share. I did want to mention, we did receive a memo from Joel Petras dated April 11, 2022. He indicated he had no comments on the application at this time, although I did see two letters from Joel Petras dated March 30th, 2022, which were will serve letters, identifying capacity for connection to the Rombout Water and Rombout Sewer Districts. And then we did see the Duchess County Department of Health letter, so those comments will need to be addressed. There was the issue of the 7,700 cubic yards of soil being cut from the site that, I guess my question was, is it intended to be redistributed on the site, and if so, how?
So it is, and Matt could actually speak to that.
Yeah, if I may, so we did identify a couple of locations that we would be able to redistribute that excess soil. Basically, the two locations that we looked at are, you know, essentially the ballfields, the, the soccer field and the, the baseball field. So with that quantity of soil, it would be roughly about a foot of additional elevation within, just within those athletic fields. That would result in no net export of soil. And then one additional location that we did look at was just to the south of those, that soccer field. We would have to raise that area approximately three feet. But again, the intent is to, you know, redistribute all of the soil generated on site, on site and within those athletic fields. And we certainly can revise our grading plans in the future to show that elevation. It's just, you know, we're still working out the fine details of exactly how much excavation will happen, but once that's complete, you know, we will update our grading plans to show, you know, where that soil is going. And the intent, like I said, would be to go within the athletic fields.
You answered my question about whether it was reflected in the grading plan, and the answer is not at this time.
Not at this time, but it will be.
Now, considering the, the history of the site with contamination, there would be a concern of redistributing potentially contaminated soils. And would there be, you know, measures to ensure that what is being redistributed is indeed suitable?
Uh, yes, and, and that's something that's been talked about. I mean, so, so there's two locate, so, one, there's an existing soil stockpile on site. If you can see on the grading plan of all the contours, like just to the west of the existing development, it's an existing mound of soil. That soil has been tested previously and is suitable for use. So, you know, one of the ideas would be to just, you know, if we are raising the elevations at the ballfields, we would borrow from that area when we're putting it within the environmental area. And then any other additional excess soil would then just be put back on that mound. But, I mean, to answer your question, yes, I mean, if we are going to be, you know, excavating any soil from the site and then putting it on top of the environmental easement, that soil testing would have to be done in accordance with the easement.
So you said it's already been tested, or...
The, the existing soil, so there's basically a soil stockpile that's already on site. That soil has been tested previously and has been deemed...
Is that something that's been provided as part of the project record?
That was part of the remediation cleanup. That soil was tested at that time, and that's what was used to provide the soil cap area. DEC had it, we, we, we didn't, the previous owners had it tested. DEC approved it for use, and that's what we use if we ever need to repair any sort of erosion or bare areas on that soil cap. That pre-approved soil is what's used for that. So moving it on to it is already approved by the DEC. It would be just if we are excavating outside of the soil cap area, but still within the environmental easement, this, that soil to be moved out of the easement and used somewhere, that has to be tested, and that's part of our engineering controls that we submitted, part of the environmental easement requirements, to make sure that there is no new disturbance and that we're not spreading anything if something does exist.
Would that DEC verification be something that could be provided as part of the project record?
I believe so, yes. Yeah.
I think we'd like to have that in our file, for sure. So if it hasn't been provided, I'd certainly like us to have that. I, you noted earlier that the, we received some new color samples for the roof, siding, trim windows, and the stone. We also received some updated building elevations and renderings, and at this point, I would like to ask the board for their thoughts on those items. I, I had the opportunity to look at them. I, I didn't have any issue with the colors provided. I believe the, the gray, or is it beige, is in line with the nearby residences, so if memory serves, so...
Correct, and that's one of the reasons why, one of the reasons why we changed it was because, you know, before it was red, but this fits more into the color schemes that already exist in the communities.
Any other comments from the board?
No, I agree. I think it blends in well.
Okay. And you noted at the top of the meeting, and I believe again just now, the 30-foot wide easement for the Greenway Trail has been added, so I appreciate, that was on this latest version.
Yes.
So I did see that. I'm going to ask the board at this time if there's any other comments or any other items that they would like to bring up.
My, my big item was the fill, and I think you've answered that. I think main thing is to make sure that we test to make sure there's no issue, right? You know, so, but, and that will be used almost immediately when you need it, right? When you're doing the fields, right? So it's not going to just be sitting around.
Correct.
Yep, okay, that was, I think you answered my questions.
Okay, and I think, you know, the big item would be to begin preparing explanation of what's been discussed and be, to be prepared to continue doing that at the next public hearing.
Correct.
I don't believe there's any actions that the board would need to take tonight or that would be appropriate.
Maybe you already did earlier by holding the public hearing open.
Other than that.
No, no, sir.
Okay, I believe that's it. If there's nothing else that you'd like to discuss tonight.
I think that was it for tonight. Thank you. We'll prepare those and have them submitted for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
So we do have a suggestion to maybe take a five-minute break. I will, we'll hold, we'll pause our meeting. It's 8:50 right now. We'll do so until 8:55. We'll do so until eight 55.
Can we order a pizza?
Okay. Item number four on tonight's agenda. Item number four on tonight's agenda, 62 Greenwood Drive, land development permit, board to review submission made by the applicant's representative on March 30th, 2022, and draft land development permit. Good evening.
Good evening. Eric Rogie with Hudson Land sign. So I think we, at the end of the process, we have the resolution, I think.
We do.
Yes.
So at this point, I will ask Mr. Bodendorf to read Pete Zataro's letter dated April 11, 2022.
Uh, do you want me to read the whole letter? I mean, essentially what he's saying is he's summarizing.
The summary, yeah.
That, you know, we've, we've worked with, or he worked with the, the applicant's engineer very closely and he's at a point now where he's comfortable in recommending that the, the board grant the permit. If, if you prefer that I read the entire letter, I will, but I think we heard most of that at the, the last meeting and.
No, I, I think the summary is good. Dominic, are there any items to bring up at this point or?
Yeah.
Actions?
Pete was a, very helpful and prepared the resolution. This is a land development permit. This is the approval for a single-family residence in this particular location. The resolution that he prepared, I did review, it's very comprehensive. It has all of the mitigation measures called out and it also has all of the conditions of approval as well called out. It's set in a form that I believe for the board to consider adoption tonight.
Any comments from board members before we ask Mr. Bodendorf to review the draft land development permit?
No.
All right, John, you're, you're up.
I'm on. Okay, so, um, the resolution of approval is titled Draft Number Two, April 8, 2022. I'm not going to read every single line of this, but I will highlight the, what I believe are the important items. The project site consists of 1.4 acres located at 62 Greenwood Drive in the town of Fishkill. Involves the construction of a 2,200 square foot, three-bedroom home, two and a half baths with a shed and driveway in the Beacon Hill zoning district, which requires the issuance of a land development permit by the planning board. Application was formally accepted by the planning board on April 15th, 2021. And whereas the town official zoning board on July 20th, 2021 granted the following variances, minimum lot width and driveway grade, which run with the land are consistent with the requirements of the current project. Skipping to the next page. Whereas a duly noticed public hearing on the land development permit application was open and closed on March 10th, 2022, at which time there were comments from the public pertaining to increased stormwater runoff and were addressed by the applicant's engineer and town engineer. Whereas the planning board finds the following mitigation measures are the rationale used for the issuance of the land development permit. One, the proposed activity will not adversely affect existing or proposed water supplies or sewage disposal systems. The health department has previously approved the water supply and wastewater disposal facilities for this property. Two, the proposed activity will properly avoid downstream drainage impacts, including but not limited to application of the following criteria. The land development shall not alter the course or volume of surface waters entering Greenwood Drive effective stormwater retention. The proposal includes a SWIP consistent with the requirements of the applicable town code sections. The analysis submitted by the engineer for the applicant addressed possible impacts of development on downstream properties. Based on the evidence and the record, the impact of the proposed development on the overall drainage basin is, is expected to be minimal, if at all quantifiable. The proposed activity will stabilize all earth cut and fill slopes by vegetative or structural means. The land development meets the criteria in section 150-59 of Town Code pertaining to site development plan approval. Five, all construction, land disturbance and land clearing activities shall be undertaken in a manner designed to minimize surface runoff, erosion and sedimentation. The construction and site work shall at the minimum prevent any and all soils from being deposited onto adjacent properties, rights away, public or private storm drainage systems, roads, streets or watercourses. And six, the construction sequencing schedule has been, been developed and site construction will be inspected by the applicant's engineer and town engineer and weekly reports will be provided. So now therefore be further resolved that the planning board in its capacity as the authority having jurisdiction in this matter hereby issues this land development permit for 62 Greenwood Drive, subject to the following terms and conditions. I'll just, there, there are several conditions. I'll just hit on the ones which I think are most relevant to the property. All work should be conducted in accordance with the approved plans, the accepted stormwater pollution prevention plan, the applicable project specs. The project sponsor shall employ the services of a licensed PE to conduct weekly inspections during the course of work and provide inspection reports to the town. Upon completion of the work, the licensed professional shall certify to the town official that all work was conducted and completed in full conformance with the plans, SWIP and the terms and conditions of this permit. The town official reserves the right to stop any and all land development or construction activities associated with this project when deemed necessary or appropriate by the town as represented by the building inspector and/or planning board engineer and may impose reasonable additional requirements or conditions to this permit if and when such are deemed necessary or appropriate. Moving to the next page. Standard language about the required signature block on the, the plans and skipping down to 11, posting of a performance bond or other form of security acceptable to the planning board attorney in the amount of $10,000 to ensure restoration and stabilization of the site. Landscaping and screening. Project sponsor prior to the issuance of the building permit shall post with the building department a performance bond or other, other security in, in an amount as approved by the town engineer to secure to the town the satisfactory installation and completion of all required landscaping and screening in accordance with the approved plans.
I'd like to stop on, on that one.
Yeah.
Because 12A mentions a performance bond, that's a separate performance bond from the one described in item 11.
That's correct.
So would it be appropriate to add a, a word or separate performance bond or landscape performance bond?
And we also need an, an amount as well. We haven't discussed that as a board at all, what the amount is going to be.
Right.
So a, a few things there. One, to differentiate that this is indeed a separate bond. And then I guess, I don't know if, John, you would have a recommendation on an amount or be prepared to?
Typically what happens in, in this, it, it probably should have been requested at the, the last meeting, but typically what happens is we ask the applicant's professional to obtain a quote and then we review it and recommend whether it's appropriate. And in this case, I wasn't aware that that didn't happen until just a couple of days ago and there was no way to, to get an estimate. So there are two ways we can do this. We can table this until the next meeting and, and request that and, and write it into the resolution or it's, it's something they have to post with the town. We can ask them as a condition to provide the estimate, we review it and then before the actual building or we don't have to tie it to the building permit, we could tie it to the signing of this resolution by the, the chairman that the amount is, is acceptable and then we could write it into the, the resolution at that time.
Dominic, would option two be an acceptable approach or would we be better suited just trying to come up with a number here tonight?
I mean, it's, it's difficult to come up, I think, with a number based on landscaping's and, I mean, unless we have some particular expertise as to what the landscaping is going to be. The way that it's written now is, is that it has to be in an amount approved by the town engineer. And so the process that John had laid out is standard process where, you know, an, an estimate is prepared by the landscape professional. I want, I don't want to say landscape architect because it could be just the landscaper that prepares the estimate and that gets reviewed by the town engineer and then that sets the bond amount because that's what's going to be required for the landscaping on the project.
Okay, so I, I think the appropriate change would be here to update on 12A where it says a performance bond, it would be a landscaping performance bond. So to be clear that it's a separate bond altogether. And then I don't think we would need to make any further changes because you outlined it would be addressed by our town engineer. So I think that takes care of it from my standpoint. Any other?
Makes sense.
All right. John, I'll turn it back to you to go through the rest.
Okay, so then moving on to 12B, all landscaping and screening indicated on the approved plan shall be installed prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy or certificate of completion. The performance bond or security, or let's rewrite that, the landscaping.
Performance bond.
Performance bond or security shall remain in place for a period of one year post issuance of the CVO or COC to ensure that the plantings installed are maintained in a vigorous growing condition or otherwise replaced with new plants as appropriate. Prior to the release of the financial security, the building inspector or the planning board's engineer shall conduct an inspection and assessment of landscape plantings and screening and submit a report to the clerk of the planning board concerning the condition of landscaping and intention to release this security on a date certain. 13, the project sponsor shall remit a site inspection fee in the amount of $2,500 for periodic inspection of the work by the town engineer prior to the commencement of any construction on the project site or installation of any improvements we related heretofore. And 14, standard project sponsor shall reimburse the town official for all costs incurred by the town for the review of this, of this, well, it's not a subdivision proposal, let's strike that, just strike subdivision, just leave it at proposal. And that's, that covers all the important items in the, the resolution.
At, at the bottom there where it says which conditions need to be fulfilled, do we need to add 12A?
Yes, that's a good idea.
But it says 11 through 13.
Oh, well, yeah, so it is, it is included.
It's really late.
Not that late, come on.
All right, I'll do better. All right, I'll do best.
Okay, so I think we're good.
We're good. Any comments from the board? All right. At this point, I will ask for a motion to approve and adopt the resolution for the land development permit for 62 Greenwood Drive as reviewed and revised tonight and to authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
Bridgette and Felix, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries seven zero. I think that's...
We're all good then?
I think that's it.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Healy Hyundai amended site development plan. Nope. Bridgette is in the process of recusing herself, but I will read the description, board to review submission made by the applicant's representative on March 30th, 2022, and draft resolution of preliminary and final approval. And I see Mr. Day is back up at the podium.
How are you?
Welcome back.
At the last meeting we had made, or the board, we discussed some changes that we were going to be making with the board. One of them is the reduction of the parking lot on the rear lot. We eliminated 47 spaces, and we also moved the landscaping up, if we can find a landscaping plan.
Speak into the mic.
Sorry. So we also moved the landscaping up to the back of where we relocated the parking. Another couple issues we did, we added the notes about the pavement on SP1. We added the notes about protecting the existing vegetation on SP1, upper right-hand corner. And we also showed the trenches for the proposed EV charging stations. And that's really the extent of the revisions that we had made.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
At this point, I will ask Mr. Bodendorf to review his memo dated April 11, 2022.
Yep. These are, I believe, all carryover comments regarding the consolidation plan that the applicants have agreed to put together before the site plan is signed. Confirming that they got sign off from the regulatory agencies like DOT and the Health Department. And then we also just asked that they submit a final SWIP that includes all the updates to the plans that have been made since the last revision. Most everything will be reductions and impervious, or because of that reduction in the amount of parking, there won't be any, there won't be any negative impacts to the drainage as a result of the changes. But we do need a final SWIP to reflect the plan that's going to be approved by the board.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to go down the line and ask our board members if they have any comments that they'd like to offer at this point before I go back to Dominic. So I'll start down with Vijay down there.
No comments.
Nothing. Nothing.
Felix?
No, I'm actually okay. I'm very happy with the way they've changed the landscaping. I think you've done a good job trying to mitigate any sort of impact from the neighbors, so I'm pleased with the way it's going.
And Fred?
No, nothing.
So Felix beat me to the punch. I do want to thank you for the mitigation measures taken on the plans. There are a few things I do want to mention. The board did receive a memo from Joel Petras dated April 11, 2022. He'd indicated he had no comments on this application at this time. And then I have another item. Our Chair, Mr. Kanter, made note that the town board adopted an amendment to the recently enacted local law on historic structures and sites. That's code section 150-137 to exempt all land use development proposals for which a completed application for site plan approval, subdivision approval, or grant of a special use permit was outstanding on the effective date of the local law enacting code section 150-137. This makes the question of whether a certificate of appropriateness would be needed for this proposal a moot point.
Okay.
And at this point, I will go over to Dominic and...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Brocher. This falls into the same category in the sense that yet again, I was tasked with that, preparing a resolution that I did not finalize for tonight's meeting. Unlike the Brownell subdivision, which is a two-lot subdivision that was fairly straightforward with no special conditions, this particular application does have some outstanding items as Mr. Bodendorf had pointed out. The board, I would suggest, has two options. One would be to, you know, take the same approach as Brownell where the board would grant approval, subject to the resolution being finalized after the meeting. Alternatively, you know, the resolution could be prepared and then reviewed by the board at your next meeting, given the fact that there's also additional engineering items that have to be submitted.
Yeah, I heard that the SWIP needed to be revised, and John, you could speak of their other items. The SWIP was the big one that stuck out in my mind as something that would need to be updated. So in my mind, I would think that we would like to see that happen, and then we would review the resolution at the next meeting.
The, I, to me, the more, I guess, important items that are outstanding are the outstanding regulatory approvals. Because as I, I guess I didn't explain very well, the final SWIP that they need to submit is merely a revision of the last one they submitted, which we found to be appropriate. However, it needs to be updated to reflect the current layout, which is slightly less disturbance than what was previously. So the final SWIP, I, is, in my opinion, is a pretty simple thing for them to do. Getting the final sign-offs from the regulatory agencies, that, I don't, you know, that could take a few weeks, months, I don't know where you're at, and maybe you can comment on that.
We've submitted to all agencies. I think you can see on the revised plan, special utility plan, we have moved forward with, let's say we obtained the information for the sanitary sewer across the street, and we've shown all the improvements there, and we've submitted to the Board of Health for review.
It's my opinion that we would review the resolution at the next meeting. That's my recommendation, and I'll go down the line and ask the board their opinion.
Before you do that, or as part of that...
Go for it.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think we'd really, obviously, we can, what always happens too in these situations is you can fashion the conditions now, which really helps us with the sister agencies. You know, that's really sort of, someone has to go first. It's like going to a closing, right? Who goes first? And so it would be very helpful as, you know, to be able to put some pressure on departments of health and things of that sort, that, you know, we have our approval, we have our resolution, and to enable that to happen. Because candidly, I'm dealing with some counties where Department of Health seem to not be able to get that, to get it done for three, six months. So, you know, it seems like it's not a big deal for you all to hesitate for a month, but it really, what winds up happening is you hesitate a month, Department of Health moves it back because we don't have our final resolution, and it winds up becoming 90 days before you know it. And it just keeps, it becomes a perpetual motion machine. I mean, I think we know all the sister agencies that need to grant approval, and there's nothing in your resolution that, other than referencing getting appropriate DOT approval, DOH approval, and the SWIP. I mean, the reality with the SWIP is the SWIP has to be signed off by you all as an MS4, but then it goes up to DEC on an NOI anyway, and we have to get the acknowledgement back. So there's more steps here, and each time we slow on one, it winds up, because we're a heavily regulated state, slowing down a lot more than just the little 30 days between here and the next time we're in front of you. Everyone perpetuates that, and it winds up becoming six months, believe it or not. And it's not your fault because it's only your 30 days, but then it becomes someone else's 30 days, and it really does become six months.
My personal opinion is on an application such as this, we would like the whole board to review the resolution. There's been plenty of issues brought up. This is a different application. That is my personal opinion. I would like to poll the board or, and see if anybody feels differently.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, first, I would like to ask our counsel, would there have been anything in the resolution that you're drafting that would have held this up?
That would hold this up?
Yes. Anything major that you would say, you know? So I'm just asking in that sense, because the way I'm seeing it is that you were going to have a draft resolution today.
Correct.
And is there anything that you would have had in there that would have made us hesitate from voting yes for it? Because if not, then I don't see why we can't do the same thing we did with the previous application and application. I think, you know, if you were going to have the draft resolution ready for us, then if there's nothing holding it up, we think we should move it.
I mean, this is a bit more complex in the sense of the issues presented compared to the Brownell two-lot subdivision. So it's a lengthier resolution. The conditions are a bit more extensive than they were for the other. But I don't, to answer your question, I don't think that there's any surprises in that resolution or any special conditions that would not be appropriate. You know, the difficulty is, is that, you know, my suggested approach on this in terms of authorizing the resolution to be signed after the meeting is a departure from your standard practice, and it doesn't give the board members the, you have a very engaged board. Every municipality is a bit idiosyncratic. Other boards don't see written resolutions on the normal course of business, and that's their practice. This board, you know, is very much paying attention to detail. And so there is a level of review that you're accustomed to that you didn't unfortunately have tonight as a result of my failure. And so I apologize for that. But to answer your question is that, you know, I don't think that there's anything in particular about this application at this point that wouldn't be appropriately captured in that resolution.
And if I may add to that, towards your question, remember, we spent a lot of time working on a secret negative declaration in Part Two and Three of the AFS back in February. And so your resolution is going to be completely derivative of the findings you already made relative to your secret negative declaration. There's not going to be any surprises or any departures from it. In fact, all it's really going to do is memorialize the fact that we took parking spaces away and decreased the area of disturbance. That's all it's going to, that's all it's going to do. And I don't mean to put words in your counsel's mouth, but you made findings on all the environmental issues in the negative declaration back in February. So therefore, your preliminary and final site plan approval resolution has to be consistent with your prior findings, and therefore it's going to be just an outgrowth memorializing actually our good gesture of actually further decreasing the area of disturbance and amplifying the landscaping and parking. And given that's really the departure and the difference, I would just beg of you, I, look, we're two years into COVID, everyone's tired. I fully, as a professional to professional, completely understand what another professional could go through at any given time, but for the grace of, you know, of God, for my family too. So I definitely don't want to go anywhere near that. What I want to do is give you the comfort that you already thought this process through before you granted the secret negative declaration. And the delta between then and now, in the past 60 days, really, is as Mark showed you, is better landscaping and less, if, 47 fewer, pardon, 47 fewer parking spaces as an accommodation along with the better landscaping. So given that, really, that's the difference, is it got better? I would just beg of you, and I'll stop here, but thank you for giving me the latitude to sort of grovel.
Well, if I may, if I may, you know, Mr. Brocher, suggest another alternative, which would be for me to finalize the draft that I have prepared, and I'll circulate it to the board and the board's consultants. And if there's no comments, then, you know, the board could authorize it being signed, but if there are any comments from the board or concerns from the board, it could be held over to next month's meeting. So it would afford you your full review, but also potentially put it over to next month as well if there's anything that needed further discussion.
I would support that suggestion because we just read a much simpler resolution, and we made corrections. So I do not want to take the approach of...
We're good with that, as long as the corrections aren't, you know, that trigger the being held over as a typo or grammar. It would have to be something pretty substantive.
Yeah, I want to set the threshold as to what would be appropriate. But I think, but I think if a board member says, you know, I would like to discuss these conditions at the next month's meeting, you know, and, but also I want to emphasize, I mean, there are some outstanding items here, like including the submission of a lot consolidation plan. As Mr. Bodendorf mentioned, the final SWIP is, you know, a fairly minor submission, but the more important things are, you know, the outstanding, you have your negative declaration. Your negative declaration allows you to apply to all the outside agencies, and you have, but it, you know, those processes are on their own separate timeline, and they're not going to be held up whether or not the board adopts a resolution tonight or at the next meeting.
I think we're this close and we understand each other, and I'm going to stop while I'm ahead.
Guys, can we...
You know, we're there, we're there. I think we're there. We're there. I know, I know. I think we're there.
It's horrible looking over there. Let's get this thing going.
That's a separate, that's a fair...
So my suggestion for the board would be to adopt a resolution, adopt, excuse me, have a motion to review and consider for final approval the resolution. And if there are no objections, to authorize the chair to sign that resolution. Or in the alternative, if there are concerns, then it would be brought up at next month's meeting.
Do I have a motion to that?
So again, Dominic, again, the same question. So when will you have the copy of the resolution ready?
And this one will take a couple more days than tomorrow, so, you know, yes, sir.
Early next week.
Yes, sir. And it'll be emailed to the board, and we'll also provide a copy to the applicant as well so that they can see it and understand, yes.
So we should expect by next Tuesday, Wednesday?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So do I have a motion to Dominic's suggested motion?
I'll make that motion, and I think it's a good compromise, given that, you know, we really don't want to just hold it up for whatever reasons, you know, but, okay, I like the compromise, I make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
Bridgette?
Well, yes. Bridgette, so six zero. Motion passes.
And once again, thank you all for your understandings on this. I appreciate it.
Thank you. You have your motion, or you have your approval?
Thank you.
You may do so. The next item...
I missed you.
That was a good compromise.
Next item on the agenda is Vanwick Mews amended site development plan. Board to review submission made by applicant's representative on March 30th, 2022, draft EAF Part Two, draft EAF Part Three, and... Draft EAF part two, draft EAF part three, and draft statement of environmental significance. So we have two recusals here?
Yes.
Vijay and Ravi.
Correct.
Good evening.
Good evening. Acting Chairman, members of the board. My name is Brian Sensabaugh. I'm an associate with Sarin Steinmetz, eighty-one South Main Street, White Plains, New York. Here on behalf of the applicant, Toll Van Wick LLC, I've represented here from Toll Van Wick LLC, the applicant, Greg Otis. Also here is the engineer of record in site engineering, Rich Williams, and Evan Pendleton. At the March tenth, two thousand twenty-two planning board meeting, the public hearing was opened. We heard comments from both the board as well as the public, and public comment was accepted for a period until March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two, following that hearing. We have received and reviewed the public comment letters that were provided to us from the town. And on March thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two, we filed a resubmission in response to CPL's March seventh, two thousand twenty-two memo, the comments of this board at the March tenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting, as well as the public comments that we received. I just want to highlight a couple of these items that we addressed at the submission, and then I will turn things over to our engineer of record. First, with regard to lighting, the applicant has coordinated with Central Hudson and will be providing dark sky compliant lighting. Second, the board, I believe, was provided building samples for the building architecture as was requested. And third, access paths were added to, for pedestrian and bicycle traffic along the emergency access road that connects the ends of Teaberry Lane and the proposed Road A. I believe, just real quick, before I turn things over, also with regard to SEACR, at this point, I believe that, actually, on March tenth, at that hearing, there was a period that had not lapsed under SEACR to provide you the opportunity to declare lead agency. I believe that period has lapsed now at this time, so lead agency can be declared. Secondly, we respectfully request that negative declaration under SEACR be issued. And I'll turn things over to Rich Williams for now.
So good evening. Again, Rich Williams in site engineering. Brian did a great job at summarizing the changes. I'm just gonna touch on a couple of things that.
Sorry, if you could just speak up just a little bit, just, please.
Absolutely. I'm gonna touch on a couple of things that Brian didn't. As you see, we've brought our material sample board. On there is the representative siding and architectural shingles. We have whiteboard and bad siding. You can see our sterling gray shake, as well as sideboard siding. Those correspond to the elevations that were previously submitted. We've also provided an updated letter from the Rambaut Fire Department, saying that they continue to concur with the design as proposed. And then we've updated some of the engineering details, providing additional water, water main profiles. At this point, we have a submission ready to go to the Health Department. We have been talking to the Health Department about making this submission, how to approach it, because again, this is an amendment to a previously approved project. And what we're really hoping to do tonight is to go through the night deck with you, which is one piece of the puzzle that we would like to provide the board a half while our submission. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Bodendorf, I'd like you to go through your review memo from April eleventh, twenty twenty-two.
Sure. As was mentioned, per SEACR, the board can now, because the thirty-year, thirty-day period has elapsed, declare themselves lead agency for the environmental review of the project, and you would need to do that before you got into the, any EAF review or neg deck determination. Again, a lot of these, these comments are, are carryovers from our previous memo. We've asked for ASBILD info on the stormwater basins, just to determine if any modifications are needed. We're not expecting that, but we, we do need to have them verify that. We've asked for updated water and wastewater engineering reports after they get feedback both from the town's water sewer operator and, and county health department. We've asked for an updated lighting plan with revised lighting fixtures, as referenced in the, the latest March thirtieth response letter. And then the board, upon the receipt of that, will need to, to weigh in on whether or not it's appropriate. We note that the board should review the updated architectural plans that were submitted and the samples that have been provided tonight, and, and make their own determination regarding appropriateness. We've asked for structural calc's for the retaining walls that are proposed for the project. We've asked for street trees to be shown along the proposed streets. And let's see, there is, there is a question about trash pickup for proposed building number ten. It doesn't appear that there's any enclosures for dumpsters there. So we've asked for some clarification on, on how that's gonna be handled and, and how it will be handled for all the townhomes as well. And we have been playing phone, we, we, we did reach out to the highway superintendent regarding the drainage details, and we just haven't connected with him yet, but we're not anticipating any necessarily negative feedback from him regarding that, since this will all be managed by HOA, so. That's pretty much the extent of our comments.
Would you like to speak to any of those?
Sure. With respect to the refuse enclosure, we have provided a general note on the drawing. It's, it's on this aerial plan here as general note number six. Building number ten, which is the last of the condo-style buildings to be built, will share the refuse enclosure that exists in the lower portion of the site with the other nine condo buildings. Again, this refuse enclosure was originally designed for eighteen condo-style buildings. We're now only gonna be having ten condo-style buildings sharing this one enclosure. As far as the townhomes, they will have private garbage pickup, so they will have individual pickup at the end of their driveway.
Is, is that noted on the plan as well? If, if not, just please make that clear, maybe, maybe within that same note.
Sure. We did the, we can do that, and we can make it clear.
Okay.
So Dominic, I believe the first action this board should be taking would be, right off the bat, let's, unless you disagree, we would ask for a motion for planning board town official to declare, declare itself lead agency. Is that?
Yes, you can confirm your status as lead agency at this point.
I'd like to do that right now, before we get into anything further. Is that appropriate?
Of course.
So I'm gonna ask for a motion for the planning board of Town of Fishkill to declare itself as lead agency to coordinate the SEACR review for the Van Wick Meadows amended site development plan.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Abstained? Motion carries five, zero. So is there anything else that we would, that you want to add at this point before we get into our board comments?
Yeah, I mean, in, in addition to, you know, the, the discussion that you've had so far tonight, you know, I want to point out that at last month's meeting, you did have the public hearing. You did accept written comment following that public hearing. And there was a significant level of comments that were received by the town, by the planning board in connection with that. So I'm not sure if the applicant has received a copy of those, but I think that there was somewhere in the neighborhood of forty-seven.
It is indeed forty-seven written comments following the March tenth meeting.
Yeah, and they raised a number of concerns. I certainly defer to the board as to how you'd like to address it. But there is a number of comments that certainly fall well within the purview of the board in terms of site engineering, site circulation issues, and traditionally SEACR issues. There are some comments that, in, in my professional opinion, would fall outside the board's purview. But there's, there's quite a bit of there in terms of the level of public comment that's been made so far.
You have addressed the elephant in the room. So our board did receive forty-seven written comments at the last, the planning board meeting, or following the public, uh, planning board meeting. We do have the full log. You have that as well. I, I saw you mention it in your cover letter, but your app, your, some middle package did not dive into that, into concern. And again, some of the issues, hard water, water pressure problems, traffic concerns, radon, garbage disposal issues, inadequate clubhouse, pool, and more. And I understand some are under our purview, and some are not. With that said, I didn't see any substantive mention of the public hearing comments. And with that said alone, before we go into anything else, I don't think that this board should consider review of the draft EAF part two or part three, because there are, as part of the environmental review would be the addressing of the public comment. And because of the volume and the significance, potential significance of those comments, I don't think this board should even consider reviewing the draft EAF part two or part three tonight until the applicant addresses in writing the comments brought up tonight. Some of them are potentially significant, and, you know, and that's not even getting into some of the other items that I wanted to discuss tonight, so.
So we're, we're happy to have a discussion with the board tonight on the comments received. We certainly agree with counsel that some of the comments are within your purview. Many of the comments are, we don't believe to be appropriate for a planning board forum. Those issues that the board wants us to address, we will. We aren't obligated to respond to every single comment in writing. But some of the things that we did note and want to remind the board as a starting point is this application is for an amendment of a previously approved site plan, where we are decreasing the intensity of the use on site. And as you take a look at significant adverse impacts under SEACR, that has to stand, you know, out front first and foremost, that this was a previously approved project. Now, as there's things within the site plan that the board may want us to address, I think it's appropriate for us to have the discussion. Do they rise to the level of significant adverse impact in comparison of what was previously approved? Or are there site plan-related issues that we should be discussing after the night deck and as part of the site plan approval? And we're happy to have that discussion. With respect to hard water, we are purchasing water from the town. We don't control the quality of the water, but it gets delivered to us as it does to everyone else. It is not our responsibility to fix town-wide water issues if there is hard water. With respect to water pressure, we believe that there is adequate pressure. One of the things that we are gonna be doing is doing hydrant flow tests. That's part of the reason why you don't have a final water engineering report or coordinating with KMO that will confirm the pressures are sufficient.
Wouldn't we want that before we do an EAF part two or part three, or a statement of significance? I understand your concern, but that alone is, I mean.
Well, let's talk about that, because this is what I do for a living as an engineer, and I look at this very technically. You already have a report for the original project design that proved that there was adequate flow and pressure.
In two thousand seven?
KMO has already indicated that there's adequate capacity and pressure.
In two thousand seven?
Currently. As part of this application, our discussions with KMO, they've indicated there's adequate flow and pressure. We actually believe the pressures are gonna be high, but again, we're doing our due diligence to secure, you know, to ensure that.
Does this board have that documentation at this time?
We are waiting to complete the hydrant flow test, but again, that's, is this a significant adverse issue?
It might be.
That has been studied. It is something that has been proven, and now we are just reconfirming it for a project that is less intense in use.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, I, I think it, it might be difficult, given the fact that there's been forty-seven separate written comments submitted so far. My suggestion to move this process along would be for the applicant to prepare what I would call a responsiveness summary. And a responsiveness summary wouldn't be a response to every single letter, but rather to the categories of issues that are raised. Many of them are raised by a, a number of the commenters, and so they could be broken out into categories. And then there could be not only the, the identification of the concern, but also how the applicant is, is proposing to address it, either through the fact that this is an amendment that would be less intense than the, the previously approved project, or, or through other mitigation means. But I think it would be helpful for the board to have that kind of responsiveness summary from, prepared by the applicant, so that you could consider it. Because as you touched on, the next step in the process is the adoption of the part two, and, of the EAF. In the part two, you're categorizing whether or not things are a small, no to small impact, or a moderate to large impact. And it's difficult to do that.
Information needed to make those assessments.
Well, you, you have a lot of concerns that have been raised. And so, you know, in the absence of having a, a more deliberate approach to this, I, I would not recommend an ad hoc approach tonight, picking and choosing on just, or focusing on a few selected comments. And I don't think it would be fair to the public to, you know, acknowledge that there's been forty-seven letters written, but not, you know, take into account all of the concerns that were raised in, in them, because people took the time to write them and.
And that went right to my first point, which was to have the applicant address that. And, and again, some topics may not be as pertinent to our review, and that's fine. But I think some of the key items do need to be discussed in writing and substantiated where possible, so, and that's one item.
Are there specific topics the board would like us to focus on? So for instance, well, no, no, it was, was, in fairness to the applicant, you talk about traffic and circulation. We're building a road network which follows town standards with respect to width, size of roads. We are creating a less intense use than previously contemplated. You know, when you compare the finding statement that you've already adopted with what we're proposing, as you go down through the SEACR checklist, you can say that we are less of an impact than previously proposed.
I don't agree with that. I, I really don't. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I apologize.
And these are the topics where, where I'm asking, if there's specific issues where you'd like us to substantiate, we will.
I understand. You keep saying it's a less intense.
Well, I mean, during the original, during the original approval, there were traffic studies performed, where they're not during the original approval.
Correct.
So let's call it two thousand seven, two thousand six, there was a traffic study that analyzed what is there today, and, including the final phase, in that condition at that time. However, it is now twenty twenty-two, and we have a development that has been here. We have actual numbers that could be, you know, we have actual data, real-life data, that can now be calculated as opposed to a hypothetical development that did not exist at that time. So I think in terms of traffic, sure, we have the two thousand six, two thousand seven traffic study, but I'd like to see, understand what the, how that compares to modern-day traffic conditions, and what that future condition would be as well. And furthermore, am I mistaken in saying that there was a second access road in the two thousand seven approved plans?
First of all, there was not a second access road. To any of the plans that I have received, I have not seen one or have been provided, including the approved plans. Now, as far as, when you look at this from a SEACR standpoint, you have a finding statement that you have conclusions. And what's appropriate to do is compare this amendment to those findings and say, do we now rise to a level of a significant adverse impact? Is it a new impact? Which is why I'm saying, when you look at, for instance, traffic, we've decreased the unit count. So we'll be able to compare our decreased unit count to show that it's less intense than the previous findings adopted by this board, in my appropriate, in my opinion. Brian, it's really your bellywreak, but those are the metrics we should be using to measure under SEACR, not treating this as if it's a new application.
Well, if I may, I mean, that would be part of the, the argument that the applicant would make as part of its responsiveness summary. I mean, as I, as I suggested, you know, this is that they, they look at all of the public comments. They categorize the public comments into specific areas, what the concern is, and then they provide their response to that. But I think my, my concern is, is doing it an ad hoc way tonight, where we're just picking and choosing.
No, I, I understand.
I think, you know, I don't know that there's much more to talk about in connection with this, because I can't recommend to the board at this point that you would adopt the part two EAF, you know, given the fact that there's a significant level of public comment that's been received, and you don't have all of the information that's in front of you. But that's incumbent on the applicant to make that best foot forward presentation.
A million percent understand, a million. A million percent understand, a million, a million percent understand, but I thought it was important to raise some of these key issues.
Oh, I'm not disagreeing with you.
My original recommendation of the, the memo that you're suggesting is still there, but I think we owe it to the public to at least raise some of these questions that would become part of that.
Agree. I'm, I'm only addressing the, the applicant's representatives, you know, that obviously want to continue the discussion tonight, but I, I don't think that it would result in any action being taken by the board tonight.
So at this point, I will, I've done enough talking. I'm going to let the board chime in and provide any additional input that they would like.
If I may, Mr. Chairman?
Go for it.
Thank you. First, I, I don't agree that it's a less intense use. You're changing the amount of units, yes. The bedroom count's going up. When you go from two bedroom condos to three, three bedroom townhomes, most of them are three bedroom. Is there one unit that's a two bedroom townhome?
The condo.
Yeah, right. There's one of them, right?
The, the condo buildings are two bedrooms.
And all the, oh, please, I'm asking the public, please, if I can speak. Are there any two bedroom townhomes?
The townhomes, the, no, the townhomes are three bedrooms.
So when you have two bedroom condos, who are you attracting? Maybe single people, maybe young couples, couples. You're not getting too many three, four person families. Your townhomes are going to have families. And I know for myself, I have a daughter. I, how many times am I in and out of that, of my house? Taking her here, taking her there, taking her to school, taking her to activities. It increases the traffic. I don't think it's a less intense use. Just because they're less units, I think there're going to be more people there. And there's going to be more traffic going in and out. And the traffic study that was referenced in the, in the 2006 NEGDEC was done in 2001. Okay. I think we should be looking at traffic at this point to see if it's an issue. Because it was, and I understand it's amendment, but this is 20, you know, 20 years later after that traffic study was done. I think that's, should be reasonable that we should at least look at traffic because that corridor, I don't know if in 2001 or when they supplemented it, that they could envision how much traffic is going up and down that corridor. So this one of the things, you also mentioned the water that you get the water from the, and it's not your responsibility. You know what? I, I think it is. If somebody's going to buy a home, they should not have to worry about appliances breaking down, applying a bad water. They shouldn't have to worry about that. So what I would like to know is, is the water tested? Where is it tested? Is it tested at the end unit? Is it tested where the end user is? Because my feeling is that if there's an issue of water, then we should address it and not just let new people come and buy their homes and then all of a sudden they have problem with water. They have all these issues, right? I just, I, I think we have an obligation to look into that because we have ample evidence in front of us that there's problems here. And we just don't want to ignore that, right? So I think the water issue should be looked at. I think the traffic issue needs to be looked at. I know there's certain things that we say that we don't have a purview to deal with, but you know, I'm, I, I looked at all those letters. It's, listen, I bought a new townhome. Why? Because I don't want any problems. I, I'm good at breaking stuff. I'm not good at fixing anything. Okay. That's why people buy something new. They don't want to have any issues in the future, right? They want to buy something new. It seems like so many things that I read, it's like people are having issues with their places. What I would love from Toll Brothers, and I've loved working with you guys in the past, is for you to have, give us an assurance and confidence that whatever you're building is going to be built well. The craftsmanship's going to be good, the work quality, the, the everything that you put into it. So that the people who move into our town, our residents, the people that we serve are going to be in a place that they can be proud of, they can be happy of. Toll Brothers has a name. When people buy a property, they see that name, they think, oh, Toll Brothers, this is a great place. And I want them to feel that way. Right now, I think in that merit area, especially Van Wick Muse, they've lost that confidence. And I don't, I want you as Toll Brothers to give us that confidence that we can say, all right, build this and you're going to build something great, right? Does that make sense?
It does. And, and just the one. The one thing with respect to the water that I think in fairness to the applicant, you have to realize is we're not responsible for testing the water. We're not responsible for the upkeep of the water. The water's delivered to us. And if there is a hardness issue, it is not incumbent on this applicant, just like if a homeowner somewhere else in the water district was going to build a new home there, it wouldn't be incumbent on them to fix the water coming into their house. There, if there is an issue with the water being supplied by the town, it is not this applicant, applicant's responsibility to fix it. And, and that's just something that, that's in fairness to them. They're buying the water from the town. And if it's being delivered in a subpar standard, you can't point the finger at Toll Brothers and, and tell them it's your issue. Again, water is sampled by the town. The town is ultimately responsible for the water district, not Toll Brothers.
I understand that the water comes from the town. I, I totally understand that, but I'm saying.
There's a compromise. You can always put a water softener in.
Yeah, something we can do here to make sure.
And if you put it in at each home and part of the, part of construction, like you do with stove or anything else, people will know that they have hard water. You give them the instructions, they gotta put the salt in. And it's a compromise.
So I. Can I just maybe add something here? I mean, they are correct. They are not responsible for testing the water. The town is. The town delivers the water. That water is naturally considered hard. It's not, hardness isn't regulated by the health department and it's, it's not something you treat at the source. You would typically treat it at the point of entry at the house. Now, I don't think that the, the board can direct an applicant to provide individual softeners for every new home. Some people don't like soft water. I personally don't. However, they can request that the applicants at least provide an area where a homeowner could install their own softener if they prefer to have the water softened.
Yeah, I, I understand that. And I don't want to get into the, and it's a fair.
No, I mean, they, they still need to respond to the, to the comments. I'm just saying from the town's perspective.
And I agree, it's something that should be considered. I, I think the original recommendation of a memo.
Right.
Addressing some of these issues and potential avenues of mitigation would, is what this board is going, I don't want to speak to the board, but I believe that's where we're going to go here.
Yeah, I, I called.
And that would be among the items that certainly could be provided as a mitigation measure to be welcomed. But I guess.
And we are, we are okay preparing a responsiveness summary if that's where, it's, it's clear that that's the board's.
Bridget, is there anything?
No, I mean, that's how we've gotten them from other applicants. So I think it's a reasonable and fair request for them to do.
Fred?
No, I just, I, nothing. We'll talk later on about my crosswalk.
Bob?
Yeah.
So I, I think that's.
Lot of legitimate concerns.
I, I think that's this board's rec, there's no need for a motion for that as far as I'm aware.
No, I mean, I think that the board doesn't have the information necessary in order to proceed with the part two EAF tonight. So you're giving the applicant the opportunity to prepare responsiveness summary. And it also has their responses to those comments in it. So that will guide the board's direction going forward, you know, based on whether or not the board is satisfied with how that, how the concerns are being addressed.
Very good.
If they weren't addressing. I mean, it'll be.
Would it be, would it be appropriate to ask for that traffic study and that our, our consultant can also have their expert at some point look at that too?
If I can jump in on that.
Sure, please.
Give us the opportunity to provide the responsiveness summary and see if it's adequate.
I, I would concur in that because I, I think that they should have an opportunity to provide the information as how they're responding. And then the board will have the opportunity to decide whether or not that's sufficient or additional analysis is warranted.
Okay.
I think we'd be armed hopefully with enough information to make that decision. Yeah. I think that's where we, we stand tonight.
Understood. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that is the last item on the agenda tonight. I don't know if Ravi and Vijay are out there. Just a few items that to bring up before we get out of here.
Before we, before we leave Van Wick, I just want to point out that the memo we got from the zoning, the memo we got from the zoning administrator, although signed, did not indicate.
Excuse me, we're still having a meeting. We're still conducting a meeting.
It did not indicate whether he felt that he approved or didn't approve the application, you know, what was on his letter.
Well, I think Joel's memo didn't check the box, but he also didn't offer any comment. So I think without any written comment, we would safely assume that there were no comments. But I don't know that there's anything further, but I didn't.
I think he should, the form, I think the form should be complete. I think there's enough interest in this project that it should be complete and he should be documented what his opinion is.
I, that's, you're, you're allowed to make that opinion.
Absolutely.
A few items before we close tonight's meeting. A quick update on the comprehensive plan update committee. This is from John, so feel indulgent for a minute. He provided me an update. The comprehensive plan update committee resumed its meetings on Wednesday, February 23rd and April 13th. Meetings were held on Zoom and broadcast on cable access stations and on the town website. The resident survey questionnaire was finalized and is available for residents to fill out. Residents can respond to the questionnaire by hard copy online and via a link on the town's website. Further information on the survey is available on the town's website. There are also a number of locations around town where informational flyers about the survey have been circulated. And I would strongly encourage residents to seek out that questionnaire and survey and to provide their input. The comprehensive plan committee greatly appreciates and needs that help in order to create the best comprehensive plan we can come up with. So I think that's important. The committee is also a new timeline for meetings and completing the comprehensive plan update. The process is now expected to conclude around the end of October 2022 with several additional opportunities for public participation and input after the survey. The committee is also working on a draft vision statement for the town and has made progress on reviewing and revising sections of the current comprehensive plan. And that was directly from Mr. Cantor, who we greatly missed tonight. With that said, is there anything else that the board would like to bring up at this time?
No, I'd just like to welcome our new members.
Yes, yes.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And thank you for being voting members tonight. Vijay and Fred, thank you.
Thank you.
No, we're not. I apologize. We're not, this is not a public session. But thank you to our new members. Welcome to the jungle.
Come and play the song, Anthony.
And I, I don't think anybody's worked the gavel quite as many times as I had to tonight.
Yes, yeah.
My wrist is hurting. The next meeting of the planning board is scheduled for Thursday, May 12th, 2022. And the submission deadline for that meeting is Wednesday, April 27th, 2022 at 2:30 PM. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, yes.
Do I have a second?
I second that.
There we go. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm going to take that as a seven zero vote.
We finished way early today.
And we're done.